The December 10th organizational meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson. I'm going to ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Ms. Rotelli, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Election of temporary chairman, secretary. Then accordance with the bylaws, Superintendent Mike Cummings serve as temporary chairman, secretary during the election of board officers. Cut a motion, Mrs. Max Canelli, excuse me, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. All in favor? It is unanimous, motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Is there a nomination for chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Vitale for chairman.
Is there any other nominations for chair? Okay. Okay. Second? Ms. Pitco?
I second the nomination for Mrs. Vitale for chair.
Thank you. All in favor of Ms. Vitale for chair? Thank you very much, that's nine zero. Is there a nomination for vice chair? Ms. Gerber?
I would like to nominate Nick Asa for vice chair.
Is there a second for Mr. Asa?
I second the nomination for Nick for vice chair.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, seeing none? All in favor of Mr. Asa for vice chair? And again, a nine zero. Thank you. Is there a nomination for secretary? Mr. Peterson?
I would like to nominate Jessica Gerber for secretary.
Thank you. Is there a second for Ms. Gerber?
I would like to second the nomination for Mrs. Gerber for secretary.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Okay, seeing none? Vote for Ms. Gerber for secretary. Another nine zero vote. Thank you very much.
Duly elected officers, please stay in your seats. I yield my temporary chairmanship to Chairman -- that's, you have to read this.
Is this a first time thing? All right. All right, so yes, I yield my temporary chairmanship to Chairman Vitale, and I'm going to miss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. You will be doing that again next year. Discussion of Board of Education bylaws. This is the opportunity for board members, if they have any suggestions for changes to our bylaws, you can bring them to the table now. Otherwise, we can amend the bylaws at any time throughout the year. If you want to put forth a bylaw amendment, I just ask that you submit your bylaw to the board with redline version of it. So take the current bylaw, strike the copy that you want to delete, and add the copy that you want to add in red. Does anybody have any initial thoughts they would like to share with the board? Mr. Peterson?
Well, I had spoken to you earlier about this. I actually have a variety of changes, and Mrs. Canelli and I may want to give the document a close read for grammar and other comprehension issues. The primary change that I would like to propose is that we officially change the titles of some of the officers of the board, specifically from chairman to chair, and from vice chairman to vice chair. You have been an excellent chairman of this board, and it's probably time to come up with a term that is more satisfactory and better descriptor of what kinds of people are eligible to hold the position.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Max Canelli?
On that topic, and, well, two things. First, I was hoping Mrs. Gerber could arise, because maybe she would remember it best. If any of us were to come up with amendments, the process, correct me if I'm wrong, would be that it absolutely gets submitted so that it is put out to the full board by the Thursday packet, and does it include both a redline version than a cleaned-up version as well as a rationale, or does that not all have to be included?
I think it really depends. I think in some cases, changes are self-explanatory, so you really don't need to provide a rationale. If you feel that there may be some clarification, even if it's not board members, but, you know, members of the public who look at the packet, if you see that there's a need to provide any context or rationale, then by all means, but it's certainly not required. So it's really case by case.
And then, my second question for, because Mr. Peterson and I have talked a little bit about an overall cleanup sort of thing, that would be excruciatingly painful to do it on, I mean, is there such a thing as a, we'd like to propose some global edits as a single motion? I mean, obviously, that, in other words, not going Article One, Section One, A, comma. Article One, section, that sort of thing. What would be the proper process for that?
I, well, this is new for me as well, but I would say, and get the sense of the body on this, that if we are just cleaning up the bylaws for punctuation and grammar, to just put it in red, your edits, and then just submit it to the board for review as a single vote. Ms. Jacobson?
Could you do two motions? One is more punctuation-grammar-ish, and then the second one would be context-related, if there is, I don't know what you're thinking of proposing, but outside of grammar, because there could be two separate motions, right?
Yeah, I think that if the context changes, then that would be something to discuss, then maybe we need to break it down, but if it's really just to clean up the copy, then I think we can address it all with one motion. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay, so moving, we look forward to your edits. Anybody else have any thoughts they want to share about this? I shared these thoughts with the Finance Committee. I'm looking to possibly rework the title and the function of the Finance Committee to include facilities and discussion of operations. I haven't worked out the copy yet, simply because a lot of the work that the committee is currently doing does focus on those areas, and I think it will just be a little bit cleaner in terms of outlining what the role of that committee is. As I work on the copy, I will, you know, get to the board for feedback, as well as really starting with the Finance Committee. I mentioned to Ms. Lieber, and Mr. Asa, and to Superintendent Cummings. So that is on my radar. And seeing none, of course, at any time, as I said, throughout the year, if any member wants to make a change of the bylaws, we can do it at any meeting, we just need to give notice to the public. You have at your seats the Committee Liaison assignments. There have been no changes to this document. I'm asking board members, just let me know that if you, if you're happy where you are, to let me know. If you're looking for a change, to let me know. I realize that sometimes just the coming of the meeting may no longer be feasible for some members. We have a new member, so we have to, you know, give her some liaison assignments. Ms. Lieber is currently running for the 132nd district seat, so depending on how that election works out, we may or may not be having a new board member. So I'm, if it's okay with the board, I think that we just keep a status quo on these assignments for the next month or so, until we know where, where we are. If anybody knows right now that they have a problem with their current assignment due to scheduling change, just let me know, and we can make some adjustments. Does that work? The 2020 Board of Education calendar, we've got a draft of that in our Friday packet. If anybody has any problems, if you know that you're definitely going to be out of town, we pretty much followed the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. There were some conflicts with other town bodies having meetings the same night, so those are changes. For the budget, Mr. Asa was going to be out of town, or not available, the night of our budget vote, so we moved that from the Thursday, which was originally shared with the board in our budget workshop packet. Any questions on the calendar? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I really apologize for not having brought this up earlier, but we usually put in the town hall meetings on this schedule, and I completely forgot about that. So I don't know if we want to, you know, oh, Mr. Asa has his hand up.
Mr. Asa?
I could be wrong, but I thought this past year, we decided to schedule them, and they were not pre-scheduled, but I could be wrong. I thought there was some discussion about moving forward.
Oh, I, yeah.
I honestly don't know the answer, but for some reason, it's ringing in my head that we had, yeah.
We did, they were on the calendar, right. That's, well, in past years, they have been, I think, I've been on enough years that, you know, some years they are, and some they haven't been, I don't know. In any event, I just thought that's something that we may want to, just in terms of making sure that we have enough advance notice, especially if at least one of the town hall meetings will be one that will probably be fairly well-attended, so.
And Mrs. Brown and I actually discussed the town hall. For this draft, I did not put it on there. We were sort of waiting to see what happened with other town bodies setting their meeting schedule, as well as the, the meeting schedule for the budget, especially for the spring town hall. We also, in speaking with the superintendent, wanted to see how the special meetings that we might need to have for the district improvement plan, try to get those dates set, and then work the town hall meetings possibly around those dates, just to make them meaningful. We could set it now. I think last year, we set it and then needed to move it, but sense of the body, can we wait until January?
I mean, I'm fine either way. I just wanted to bring it up, since we're discussing the calendar. I mean, I completely understand, we have a lot of moving parts, so if we want to hold off on that, I have no issue with that. I just thought now is the time to bring it up.
I appreciate that, and it, we will still be holding a town hall in the spring, and then after the start of the new school year. Is everybody fine with waiting, or do you want to try to set a date? Mrs. Max Canelli?
Two things. I do think the more we put on here, the better, you know, from, you know, anything that we, and if it gets moved, it gets moved. I just think the sooner we commit to things, the better. I'm not saying I'm ready to make the suggestion, but I had another thing to point out. Because we have an odd Labor Day this year, that August 25th, an awful lot of people are not going to be around, and I don't know if there's any thought to going to a September
Well, I guess September 1st is the first day of school, so I can't imagine there'll be many people coming out for that meeting either. I mean, we have had meetings in August, and, I mean, they usually tend not to be that well-attended, to be quite honest, so I don't know if moving it just for the purpose of hoping to get a bigger audience, I don't know if that's necessarily.
Well, maybe not audience, but paying attention, even. I don't know, it was, it was just a thought, because this is, normally, deferring to the final Tuesday in August makes sense, but this is a different type of cal, I'm just throwing out there as a thought, that, because normally, that Tuesday would be as we're going into classes, and this time, that's a full week earlier. And I'm just, I don't, that's my only thought.
Mr. Cummings, do you have any thoughts about that? Initial thoughts, not to put you on the spot, but?
No, I, no, I understand the rationale of, I think, from our perspective, from the administrative perspective, we will be ready either a date in terms of information. If we're coming in on the August 25th date, we'll be fairly, I would say, 99% staffed, know whether any staffing issues would be. We'd have a relatively close enrollment projection, and we'd be fully prepared to talk about the work that took place during the summer. So I, I think from our perspective, that would work either way. I defer to the larger issue around awareness of the community.
Mr. Peterson?
I might just add, just as an initial thought, my, my concern would be less about kind of the public's awareness, and more about our ability to have a briefing before the school year starts, rather than right on top of the start of school.
I'm leaning towards that. I think that it's just, just starting from this past year, when we had the special meeting at the end of July for, you know, the superintendent, we ended up doing some business at that meeting in July. So I think that we should still keep that date, just to be, get up to speed from where the staff is, but to Mrs. Max Canelli's point, instead of the agenda, we'll be sensitive to maybe not put things on the agenda that, you know, would be of particular interest to the public, anything controversial, or that we need public, you know, buy-in, or comment, or guidance. But that is August, so things can change. Anything else? Okay, any other questions about the calendar? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Jacobson, all in favor? We are adjourned. The December 10th, the December 10th regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson, our student representatives from Ward and Ludlow, Ms. Denny, Ms. Solari, and Mr. Murphy. I'm going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Ms. Lieber, would you lead us in the pledge? And I'm going to ask you all to please remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost a student, a former student of Osborne Hill this week. I'm going to ask you to please keep Timmy Barron's in your thoughts, as well as the Osborne Hill community and the Barron's family. Thank you.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm sorry to start the meeting off on a sad note, but I appreciate you all taking, keeping this family in your thoughts, especially during this holiday season. I'd like to thank the board for your support for another year, for serving as chair. I look forward to the year ahead. We're going to get right to business with our student reports. Who would like to go first today? Ward or Ludlow?
So as we mentioned last meeting, Ludlow Drama Club put on a great production of The Great Gatsby. They had performances Saturday, Sunday, and throughout the school day, giving all students the opportunity to see the amazing work that they have done. Also, yesterday, Ludlow hosted the Red Cross Blood Drive for all students, 17 years old or older, and many students, myself included, saved three lives with every donation. Coming up next week, students and families look forward to the annual candlelight performance put on by the music program. They will be performing on Thursday night at 6:30 and at 8:30, and will also be performing at Roger Ludlow on Wednesday, and for Ludlow students on Friday. And lastly, on Friday, we will also be getting our school spirit on at the Winter Pep Rally, so go Falcons!
So as I'm sure some of you know, Ward beat Ludlow at the Thanksgiving game, 46 to 20, so we're all pretty pumped about that. Moving into slightly dreary news, the PSAT scores came out this week, and additionally, Ward is hosting the ACT this Saturday, excuse me. We also, last night, was the winter sports parent night, so Mr. Frye spoke with a lot of the parents who are, whose kids are participating in the winter sports, and with that, winter sports have started up for the season. Additionally, next week, the American Studies classes are going on a trip to Newport to visit the managers there at the Breakers, so a lot of the students are very excited for that.
Sorry, forgot to push. Our Ward seniors are looking forward to hearing back from their early action and early decision applications, so it's definitely been an exciting time, but very busy for all of us. We were honored to have John Trotwine come speak to juniors and seniors on Wednesday, December 4th, in our auditorium. He's a former Major League Baseball player for the Red Sox, and co-founder of the Well to Live Foundation. He was able to share his personal story with his own son, and also his powerful message, which really touched all of us. Our Ward choir performed at the annual Fairfield tree lighting. 2,000 people were in attendance, and they did an excellent job, as usual. And also, speaking of the music department, our annual carillon performances will take place next week, on Monday for our Ward students, on Tuesday for parents and families, and on Wednesday for our incoming eighth graders. It is always a really impressive show, so anybody that's interested should definitely try and buy tickets, and we wish you all a very happy holiday.
Does anybody have any questions for our students? Seeing none? Thank you for your reports. We wish you a very happy holiday as well, and good luck to those who are applying to school or waiting to hear from school. We'll be keeping, fingers crossed for you. You guys are welcome to stay, but it's raining out, and I'm going to be a mom, and you probably should get home before it starts getting cold and icy. Thanks, guys. Public comment, if any members of the public would like to come and speak to agenda items, invite you to come forward. Just a reminder, we take public comment on agenda items only, and the limit is three-minute time limit.
And I'm not worried about my three minutes this time. Frank Sahigian, 20 Chelsea Street, and a teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School. I'd like to comment on the proposal to change the middle school schedule that's on the agenda tonight, and I don't mean to steal Mr. Cummings' thunder, and would have preferred to comment afterwards, but unfortunately, I'm not able to stay for this evening. I'm here primarily to commend and thank Mr. Cummings and our three administrators for listening to the staff. I was pleased to learn today that the plan to implement the change for the next school year has been postponed until the following year, and I'm certainly pleased to hear that we'll not be going forward for the next school year due to, not the least of which, the many outstanding and unanswered questions about the enrichment intervention block, and I'm also very pleased to hear about the intention and a plan to increase the role of staff in addressing the many outstanding issues. More specifically, a recent survey sent out last week told us that there are still more than 30% of the staff, myself included, who are not in favor of making the changes outlined, and that 60% of the staff thought that not seeing students on a daily basis would have a negative impact on their instruction, while only 20% thought it would be positive. The other 20% thought it wouldn't have any impact. I think many people, again, myself included, are not opposed to a longer instructional period, we're just not convinced that 88 minutes is appropriate. The survey told us that 44% thought this block of time would have a positive impact, while a not insignificant 38% thought it would be negative, and again, the majority of staff is not in favor of losing a homeroom. Lastly, let's not lose sight, if we go from five to four instructional classes, we'll have FTE implications, and a required change in a new contract that will enter into negotiation next summer in establishing a load for a team. It would require going from currently about 120 students to 96, to account for any individual class size, and to not lose sight that four instructional classes is not sustainable if and when we get back to more historical enrollment levels. So this being a postponement, I think it's also important that we don't put this off until next year, because there are so many issues at hand, all interconnected, that will call for extensive and in-depth study. But for tonight, I once again would like to thank Mr. Cummings and our three administrators for their good judgment, and their willingness and openness to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to give comment this time? Okay, seeing none? Moving on to the Math Academy update. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, I'm going to have Dr. Rasmussen come up. Mr. Wakeman was in this morning. He, I did send him home. He was really not, he was contagious. So, for all of our benefit, and for his primarily, we sent him home. He told me he might try to come back, and I told him he would be fired if he did. So, but Dr. Rasmussen is going to ably step in and address issues, the Math Academy provide an update on that, and also with us tonight is Ms. Farrell, the principal at Holland Hill, and I'd invite her to come up, as well as to add comment. I want to make, I got a couple emails today, and I just want to begin this presentation, or introduce this presentation with a clarifying statement. This is on the agenda, because board members asked for an update on an initiative that began last year, and as the board members know, it took an extensive amount of preparation, primarily by Mr. Wakeman. It's not an indication by any means that the program is in trouble, or we're looking at the program. We, in its initial year of implementation, one of the concerns that was raised by parents who, whose students were identified for inclusion in the program, was the idea of leaving their home school to go to Holland Hill and to take a chance on a new program. We were, we were open with the board about what those concerns were. We know that that's had some of an impact on the enrollment, but we are looking to add a fifth-grade class next year to help the students that are currently in the program move up, and then, of course, continue to the fourth-grade program. In advance of the presentation, I just want to compliment the staff at Holland Hill, led by Ms. Farrell, because they really have been aware of this issue, and have taken it on head-on, and I think that you'll hear tonight about the good work they've done, and how the program has advanced. So, thank you in advance.
So we do have a presentation, if you want to go ahead and change location. Here you go. So I will start our, our presentation, actually, I'll first turn it over to Ms. Farrell, and then I'll be kind of talking about some of our Walters, the Math Academies, in terms of planning of what's currently going on in the, for the program, and also then future planning, especially related to budget. And then we'll kind of then roll right into the, kind of the math programmer view that we'll be discussing later. So I'm going to go ahead and right now, go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Farrell.
Thank you. So I guess the general question for the Math Academy for all of you would be, how's it going? And I would tell you that I don't think it could be going any better than it's going. It's truly been such a pleasure to get to know new families, new students, and kind of get them acclimated to Holland Hill. I just want to explain a little bit about how we did that. You know, it was, it was already into summer when the process was starting, and, you know, I always say that one of the best things about the elementary school level is that the kids get to stay in that level for so long, longer than any other level in public school. So it was not a small thing to talk to parents about the potential of moving their children to a new school, so I took that very seriously when I was speaking to them at our initial meeting about what Holland Hill was like, what they would kind of be getting themselves into. And Mrs. McCoy, who's the teacher, she and I worked very closely together throughout the summer, as well as with Walter Wakeman, in order to really plan that transition. I had more than a few phone calls from parents who wanted to ask me more questions about Holland Hill, and kind of understand my vision a little bit, even after the initial meeting that we had, and I welcomed all of that, because I understood what a big decision it was for them. So we decided to do a couple things. As you all know, we were under construction, so it was the last kind of push of construction, so that was unfortunate for the kids and the families, because, you know, one of the things that comforts people when they're making a change is to be able to actually see where they're going to go, and I couldn't offer that to them, because the campus was completely closed, and it probably would have made them run the other direction if they had seen it in July or August. So what we did was we planned So, what we did was we planned a little meet and greet at Gould Manor Park and the kids came one evening with their families and Mrs. McCoy and I planned it so that she was with the kids doing some painting rocks and I met with the parents and kind of gave them information on Holland Hill. And these were all families who had already said yes, we're coming, but I still wanted to make sure they were comfortable and feeling good about the decision they had made. So, after that, all those students were included in our all-school visitation right before school started so they could see the classroom, meet the teacher again and kind of see each other in the new environment. We do monthly town meetings at Holland Hill where, which are really about building school connectedness and school community. So, at the first town meeting of every year, I always introduce new students and I introduce those kids, not as part of the Math Academy, but just, here's a new student, here's another new student type of thing. And did not, you know, we have never publicly talked about them as the Math Academy at the school because I really wanted to be very careful about letting them just be part of our school and not kind of setting up something that would be uncomfortable for them or for other students. So, the way we talk about them at Holland Hill is they're 4M. You know, they're not the Math Academy ever. There's no special sign on their door. They know why they're there. I know why, you know, the teacher or the parents, obviously, you see it when you see their math instruction for sure. You can see the difference, but they really are just another fourth grade class. And we really worked hard to make sure that that was obvious to the other kids and the other teachers. Another thing we did once school started was we had a little, like a little pep rally, team-building activity where we brought all the fourth graders into the APR. The teachers really planned this whole thing and they did some, they broke them all up into groups and got to know each other kind of in a different way. And then they created a bulletin board together using their names and so it was, again, here's just a new class. It was not a big deal where we were kind of making an example of them, that they're so different. We just kind of blended them right in. And, you know, the transition has really been seamless. One other thing that we did to help was we traditionally seat the kids at lunch by class and as they get older, we sometimes will do Friday, they can mix up, they call it mix it up day, and they can sit with other kids. And we've kind of made a special decision without making any big announcements about it and we let all fourth graders sit anywhere. And we did that kind of towards the beginning of the year for the reason of allowing them to get to know other kids and not having to be separated by class. And it actually has been wonderful and the kids love it. And you see them at recess, they're playing together across classes. It is, it's just amazing to see how fast they kind of got into just, this is their school now and they wear the spirit wear on spirit wear days and are fully participating. We had our international night a couple of weeks ago and we had a good representation of new families who happened to be part of the Math Academy who were there. So, you know, I could not be more happy with how it's going in terms of their, their role at Holland Hill. And when I see the instruction in the classroom and you can see the, the way that they're being taught math and the pace that they're following and you see the looks on the kids' faces, it's, it's really fantastic to see that they are, these kids are really getting something different in math in this class that I think they're getting a lot from. So, yes, we had some feedback from the teacher, Kristy McCoy, again, who spent a tremendous amount of time this summer working on curriculum with a team of teachers and with Mr. Wakeman. And she has been extremely diligent about planning her lessons according to this kind of revamped curriculum for these kids. So, here's some of the things she's been saying, that the students are used to knowing the answers and we know that's about these kids and that she's already seen growth in their ability to really kind of push through something that's hard for them. And a lot of these kids maybe weren't having that experience in math before. They're incredibly kind and accepting of each other. And that really is true. I've seen that with my own eyes. They're, they've really become this very tight-knit community. And she has talked to me about this too, that she, she saw kids coming in and expecting it to feel the way it always felt for them at school and that they are now able to offer up partial answers and ask for help and they are learning how to deal with that feeling of struggle, which is, you know, we all know as educators, that's where kids really learn, when they are kind of feeling with, dealing with a little bit of struggle. So, that's been great. We also talked to parents and actually, a lot of these comments from parents have been unsolicited. Some of them came in after international night, some just in conversation through email that Mrs. McCoy was having. So, really, I won't read them all to you, but really very positive. And kids telling Mrs. McCoy that, sorry, parents telling her that their children before had sometimes not wanted to go to school and that that's not happening anymore. One parent just recently told her, I don't think it's here, told Mrs. McCoy that she had never experienced her child wanting to go to school when he was sick before. And now he wants to go to school even when he's sick. So, I think that, that certainly says a lot. The kids, this is what it's all about. They really are so engaged and it's really like this feeling of a workshop. So, when you go into the class during math time, they have an extended math block, sometimes you, you can't tell Mrs. McCoy is like mixed up with them and they're all working in groups, kind of grappling with things. The other day I was there and they were working on this pretty difficult project and, you know, she kind of is milling around, ready to answer their questions and support them if they needed and stopping them when she needs to throw out something else for them to think about. And I saw this little boy go over to her and he asked her, they were working on fractions, and he said, "Well, we're wondering, can we convert these to decimals?" And she said yes. And you would have thought it was like Santa was walking in the door because he went running back to his partner and he was like, "She said we can convert to decimals!" And it was so exciting and I thought, this is what this is all about, that that was really a gratifying moment for them. So, I think that, as I said when I started, I think if you were to ask me how it's going, it's beautiful. It's really just a great thing to watch.
So, I'll talk a little more about some logistical things. Walter, with the teachers also talked about, because now it's the first time through, but doing some adjustments in terms of the pacing of the curriculum because it's the first time, because they are actually doing about a year and a half worth of content in this one year. Because ultimately, this is a two-year program where they're going to be doing pretty much three years of math in two. I'll get into that here in a bit. So, and so they're, right now, as the teacher and Walter reporting out, they're on target to make, to be on track to finish their intended in terms of the curriculum moving forward. Now that also in terms of the identification process, being that this is now going to be the second time through, now the timeline will be moved up a little bit in terms, I think last year that it was more towards the end of June, a lot of the parents were getting confirmations in relation to students coming into the program and also being invited. This year, since we know the timeline that the program is in place, we have, they'll be able to identify and send out all those, those parent communications by the end of May this year. So, I think that's also, I mean, that's, that's an improvement. Also, but moving forward and there's also, there's some budget implications. One, this is the first year for, I would say, an implementation plan. One, last year, right now, we, we have a 1.0 in terms of that fourth grade. For those students then to continue up, we have to add another, another 1.0 FTE. So, that is currently in the budget request that is currently being formalized. And also, one of the, probably the big thing, also in terms of curriculum writing and also the resources. Being that now, they, because right now, the, the plan is for the curriculum is to finish through the, pretty much half of fifth grade. They finish all of fourth, half of fifth. Now, the kids, the students and the curriculum will go be doing the finishing of the fifth and then pretty much the completion of all the sixth grade expectations. So, there are going to be some terms of curriculum writing, but also looking out for, for the various resources. So, that's going to be something that, that's also part of the future plan. So, in terms of a specificity, that's, in terms of, I'm going to roll right over into our, now our, our math curriculum review. But, okay. Any questions on the, on the Math Academy? You want to come back? All right.
Thank you for that first presentation and the emails that we have gotten from parents have really just been singing your praises and it's wonderful to hear that the kids are doing so well. Go to the board for questions. Ms. Leeper?
So, I just want to thank you. This was sort of like a risk for the district and I want to commend you for your leadership and your commitment to this and the community you have built at Holland Hill and being able to welcome these families in and make it feel like their own community. And again, like Mrs. Vitale just said, the emails we've received have really like lifted up my spirits of the work we do or help facilitate and fund for you guys to do, that people feel like their kids kind of have their spark back and it was really beautiful. And also to thank Mrs. McCoy for, for building that classroom community. So, I was just wondering about the May 31st open house and whether or not there would be any opportunity to have like an opportunity for families to come in earlier than that. It's still sort of a tight timeline for families to make that decision and whether there's like opportunities to advertise the program before that and start recruiting. Is, is May 31st the earliest that that could happen?
I think that's going to depend on the selection data. So, one of the things that by moving the date back, which we're trying to do to, in order to take some of the pressure off the family decision-making, we've, we've got, like this year, we tried to use the SBA scores. We don't get the SBA scores till later in June. So, what are we going to substitute for that? How do we make sure that we're truly capturing all potential incoming fourth graders, you know, to make sure that we're doing a full screen, similar to what we do like with the gifted program? So, those are things that Mr. Wakeman's still in the process of identifying. I think I can give you a better answer on that once we've got those assessments locked down and then we can make a determination better on time. Trying to balance those two things is really the issue.
Would there ever be an opportunity, if enough kids met the criteria and there was also enough parent interest, to offer two fourth grade classrooms? Would Holland Hill even have capacity for that?
That's something we'd have to look at. It also then becomes an additional budget consideration.
So, then that leads me to the next question. And I was wondering, sort of what can we learn from what's going so well in this program and then try to generalize back to all of our other classrooms? And that's not really something you can necessarily answer right now, but just something I, to think about and, and see if there are opportunities to, to do some of that work in our, in our other classrooms?
Well, I think the big distinguisher for this particular classroom is the pacing of, of the curriculum. I think that if you were to go into the other fourth grade classrooms at Holland Hill or fourth grade classrooms across the district, the, the work to engage students in math in a, in a more of a problem-solving approach, an approach that requires students to move away from traditional memorization or fluency issues, which are still important, I don't want to diminish those, but to take those, those acquired skills and put them into problem-solving, those, those, that's an expectation in all of our math classes. And I think that, again, what distinguishes what's happening in the academy is the pace. And what we're seeing and what I hear in Ms. Farrell's comments tonight is that these are students who's, who in, in their prior classroom placement, that pace was, and this is how I would characterize it, was too slow. The pace was too slow. They were moving ahead of the class. So, we're working in the Math Academy to find a pace that meets their ability to learn and apply math. But the level, the types of activities and those, that level of expectation for engagement remains the same in all the math classes.
So... Ms. Pica?
So, my question is, if we find success in this program, can we do other ones in other elementary schools? I know one of the things is that the students have to drive themselves to the program. So, if there were other schools in the district... So, that's my question. My thought always from the beginning was, could we deliver this instruction at their home elementary schools? If we could provide more of this special programming, could we do that at other schools?
Again, I think it's related to the success criteria or the entrance criteria for this particular program. So, depending on what we identify, if you think back to it, I believe the number was around forty initial students that were identified for this program. We wound up with thirteen students placed in the class. Certainly, a large part of that is it was new and it was, it was a risk for families because it was brand new. As Ms. Farrell said, they couldn't even see the classroom. We're going to deal with the, I think back to the night we met here with parents who had, who students had qualified for the program. Some parents came to that presentation to learn more about the program, but they already knew that they weren't going to do it because it wasn't the right decision when they balanced the other needs of their students. Right? It wasn't, it was, while they were good, very good at math and a great math capability, it was only one of many factors that they weighed in making that decision. So, I think it's one of the things that we have to look at upon the success of the program. Certainly, if we're seeing forty students again in this year, but if that number begins to grow and some of the, some of the information you'll be getting in the math review this evening and in future math reviews will show you that a greater number of our students are having math success, then we have, we have responsibility to build a program to accommodate their needs. How that might look, you know, do you have, do you have class, schools at different parts of town that would offer something like that would all depend on the, on where we can go with that and what the numbers dictate.
So, one other thing I was thinking, if the numbers continue to grow of our students meeting this criteria and parents wanting additional opportunities to challenge our kids. At the elementary school I used to work at, we did small groups across the grade so that you could have a teacher pacing and meeting the needs of kids who were at whatever level and you would have enough to do that because you were grouping them across the grade. So, that is obviously a scheduling nightmare, but we would do it for reading groups and we would do it for math groups. And that way, you could alter, and this is a different conversation, but just something to think about, should the interest and need continue to grow, which, which hopefully it does for our kids in math, but...
Ms. Vitale?
I don't, I don't have a question necessarily, just a concern. I had expressed this before, a public comment before I was on the board, but it sort of piggybacks on this. My concern with this program is that we should be bringing this curriculum to all of our schools and through existing staff and professional development differentiate the instruction to make it available to all the kids who are eligible, not just the kids, not just the select few who could, you know, transport themselves to Holland Hill, you know, the thirteen kids. So, that would be my concern for the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Max, Canelli?
Just to that point, just refresh my memory or correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not the only way that a student can qualify for double acceleration. There is still that summer option. So, this isn't the only path to that. There is that as well, correct?
That is correct. And one of the things we were very clear to parents of students who did qualify for the program was that that, that other pathway absolutely remained an option for parents. So, knowing that, I think it made, going back to that question of choice, made some of those choices easier to stay. I'd rather stay in my homeschool than to engage in this.
But, because otherwise, I'd kind of want to follow up on Ms. Leeper's point because I agree that, you know, with, if there were forty people out there qualifying, you know, I certainly want this to have, be robust in appearance as well as in practice and just, I'd be very curious about having, you know, open house night where, you know, they could come earlier. I mean, can this conversation start at those March conferences when we know every parent is coming in or at least one parent of every child is coming in hopefully for the one-on-one? Is that too early to say, this might be something you want to consider if it turns out? I mean, you don't really want to say if your kid does well enough on the test, although that's essentially what you're saying. But, it would seem that March would be where this conversation could start. You know, I think thirteen, I think that the town was, we were willing to buy in on that and sold it to the town as such. Going forward, I think we would expect... Going forward, I think we would expect a more robust class size there. And so to do that, that involves some sales work, you know, so whether it's, you know, host math night, which just happens to be at Holland Hill and just happens to be taught by the teacher who's going to be teaching the math academy and inviting kids in for a fun night of math and it's just that group. I'm just, I'm sure there are lots of ways to think about positioning this, but I like that we are meeting the needs of these students who perhaps don't have summers available in the manner that other kids can pursue. And I just like this marketed aggressively as such that we're making, you know, good use of our resources. So just tossing that out there. But I did also have a couple of other questions. Has it strictly been pacing that you would consider that has needed adjusting or have there been other bumps in the road?
I mean, I think it's, no, I don't think there have been any real bumps in the road. You know, it's really just the pacing. The work that the kids are doing is Fairfield Public Schools curriculum work. It's not different. You know, that story I told you about, we get to convert it to decimals, like that's something I've seen, the same project I've seen done in Fairfield for quite a few years that is always very engaging. So, so no. I mean, I think the work was done in the summer so that Mrs. McCoy was prepared to, she knew which lessons she was going to skip because they might feel repetitive after a lesson before it or whatever, based on who these kids were. So she was prepared to do that. One way she gained some time was by skipping the first unit, which is the launch unit, which does tend to have a little bit of review in it. So that was all fine to do and she's doing a lot of, a lot of what good teachers do, which is really getting her information from the assessment she's doing with the kids to see how much they need of certain topics, but, but no.
Also that it's a longer math block. Well, that means then something isn't getting as much time. What's been the nature of that?
Yep. So we do, we spend time in our school schedule where the kids have time where they can receive intervention from their teacher for kids who need a little bit of extra help. So her class doesn't participate in that right now, so she's able to kind of borrow from that and use that for extra math time. Yeah. So actually it works perfectly.
And are you planning on looping? I mean, is Ms. McCoy going to follow this group or is she going to stay with the fourth grade?
That's a great question. Right now, the plan is to keep her with fourth grade. So we would be hiring a fifth grade math academy teacher.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to follow up on something that Ms. Farrell said because I think it addresses that question of differentiation. It's really important to keep in mind that the expectation we have, as Ms. Farrell said for teachers, is that they're responding to the needs of the students in front of them. So the idea that 24 students in front of them, 22 students in front of them are all moving at the same pace and staying at the same level would not be acceptable. We want the teachers to be assessing students and by that, of course, I don't mean chapter, unit tests, those types of things, but really that ongoing daily assessment to see where kids are, where they need extra support and time, where they're able to move forward. And in a way, this gets it, I think, to what Ms. Leeper was saying to some degree, the idea of flexible groups like we see in language arts, right? Responding to skill needs, responding to fluency needs, those types of things during the course of the day and over a course of a unit or over the course of a year. So that is an expectation we have of all of our teachers, no matter the subject, that their responses to the needs of the individual kids in front of them as well as to the whole class.
She had her end up before. I'm going to give her a chance. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you so much for your presentation and it sounds like good work is being done at Holland Hill, so I was really excited to get a lot of the emails from the parents. I just had a couple logistical questions. So some of the families that said no for this year, for whatever reason that they did, that are going into fifth grade next year, would that opportunity be offered to them again and would they be at some sort of a disadvantage because they weren't participating in the fourth grade year? Knowing the pace that you're going, they didn't make the option to come into fifth grade. So I'm kind of just looking at, are we going to be entering fifth grade students without having done the fourth grade piece?
I think no, right? I don't know.
I caught that one. That's something we've actually not yet decided on, but it's that very question we've gone back and forth on. What would, what would that look like? I will tell you that we had some thought that if students have previously been identified and they decide not to go this year and they have a consideration that maybe they'd go the following year, would we, we'd have to, I think, if we were to do that, and I'm not saying we won't, but we'd have to offer some type of like perhaps summer rush course to kind of catch them up, fill in a missing unit or something like that.
Okay. Thank you. So to be determined at this point. Okay. It's just an interesting question. And then I'm just curious, when they go into middle school, I know that's probably just a far out there question, would they be going into Algebra I in sixth grade or?
Ultimately, they would be finishing the sixth grade curriculum, which is, which is really the entry point right into our transition to pre-algebra course. So they're, they'd be going, that'd be an easy transition right into pretty much that course right away, so.
Pre-algebra.
Yeah. Excuse me, the seventh grade pre-algebra, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ms. Pica.
I'm not really sure who can answer this question, but outside of lunch, how much time do they spend with other typical peers?
Recession, after school programs, you know, they have their special classes together, art, music, gym, that kind of thing. Orchestra, a lot of them are in orchestra with the rest of the students. In the strings lessons, they're together from, with other classes. Yep.
Anything else, Ms. Pica? Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. Just a quick sort of couple of questions. Just to be clear, we're not considering expanding the size of the classroom. We're going to promote the 13 fourth graders now and bring in an equivalent number in the new fourth grade next year, correct?
Well, I was thinking that the new fourth grade could be up to 25, like a typical...
Well, it kind of leads into my next question because we're talking about whether there are things that we've learned from this process that may be transferable to math instruction elsewhere. And I guess what I was going to lead into was what, what amount of the instruction or the advancement in instruction can be attributed in some form to the smaller class size? I mean, if you're talking about doubling the class size, you know, when your anecdotes are, you know, very much this kind of small group dynamic, are you concerned at all by raising the class size that you may dampen the achievement?
I'm not concerned at all about that. I don't think the class size is impactful on the success of the class. You know, it's, it's small, obviously, but the work that is happening can happen, the small groups are, you know, it could be partnership or three students working together. So you would just have more of those small groups when they're working together. So, so no, I'm not concerned about that at all, actually. Yeah.
Ms. Leeper?
Just one last sort of question comment on the idea of identifying families a little earlier. I'd be curious if you went back to the teachers of the 40 students who were identified and asked those teachers whether or not they would have identified those kids before they got the assessment data, if they would. How many of those kids were surprises and how many of those were kids teachers knew would likely be a good fit for a program like this? And that's sort of anecdotal data, but I'd be curious to see because if we could be giving families a little heads up to be thinking about this, because it is, it's a big adjustment for a family's life to give up transportation and move their child out of the school they've known for the past four years, it could be helpful for getting more buy into the program.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when this was first presented to us, I thought that math instruction was supposed to be integrated into, say, science, that there would just be more math worked into all subjects. Is that happening or is it really still the math instruction is focused on the math curriculum?
So I think it's kind of happening naturally. Mrs. McCoy would be able to answer that for sure better, but, you know, because these kids are just more attuned to math in general, it might come out in a read aloud she's doing or during reading groups in a way that is connected to math, maybe without it being deliberate. I know that once we were able to carve out that extra time for pure math instruction by taking away the intervention time, she was feeling relieved for sure that she was able to get it all in. I don't know how often that's happening in other, in other subjects, how often math is coming up. I can't speak to that for her.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Cummings, anything else to add?
No, I would just thank Ms. Farrell for being here this evening and for speaking so well to the program. And now if we're ready, I'll turn this over to Dr. Rasmussen, who can talk about the math curriculum review. I just want to introduce this by saying, we're going, we wanted to bring you some of this, there's a lot of work going on in math and the math curriculum review doesn't actually take place for about another 15, 16 months. But given the history within the district and attention provided to math and given the amount of work that Dr. Rasmussen and Mr. Wakeman are going through, and you'll hear tonight, I think, about how the staff have been involved in this work, we've, they're the first, they were the first curriculum that really was adopted under Common Core and set off the wave of new curricular adoptions. They're going to be there for the first curriculum that goes through the next iteration. They are, they, we're not now, as we move through curriculum reviews, motivated by the adoption of new national or state standards. What we're now more primarily motivated by is what has worked and what has not worked. And because the federal government and the state government for now are quiet about curricular adoption, we're going to take advantage of that to deepen the work, to deepen our understanding about it and to deepen our ability to deliver quality curriculum through quality instruction. We've never really had a breather, as you well know, in the district around this type of work. So the work that Mr. Wakeman, Dr. Rasmussen have been involved in and have engaged staff in is a real data dive into the work that's going on, not all of it statistical, some of it anecdotal, but really trying to figure out how do we build a better pre-K, 12 coherent math program in response to the needs of all kids? And I've said enough and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
I'm excited again to come before you to talk about math curriculum. This is actually, again, an exciting moment for us. If you remember back, this actually, this is our first really K-12 approach of the big core four. If you actually get out your little history books here in terms of, Walter brought forth, I think, 3-5 was the first one that came through back and I believe that was the 2011, 2012 school year, it was the spring of 2012. I came before you in the, in the, in the spring of 2013 and we brought forth grade six through geometry. Walter also that same spring brought the pre-K through two. So, and then we built then the last half and then what is that, the, in the spring of 2014, implemented in 13, in the 14, 15 school year was pretty much Algebra II and the rest of our high school electives. So that, we kind of, kind of did some small little chunks, but this one is really our first go around of really looking at this as a K-12 system. So this is really an exciting work that's really going across the district. And one of the things is our goal is, is to kind of get out and actually do this, kind of look at this from not just like what we did prior in those, in those grade little chunks to how all of those are interacting. So really kind of our goals for what I'm going to present today is to kind of look about, outline of how we're going about doing this, illustrate some student achievement data. This is not really a, really a data heavy presentation where we, where we have a lot of information provided, but we have a lot of teacher groups getting into it. If I can see right here, actually starting in September, we actually had about, I think about 20 math teachers, math teachers from every level across our system, special ed teachers, administrators, a whole gamut of individuals. So we're really trying to make this an inclusive process to kind of really kind of outline how we're going about doing this. And then at the end, we'll kind of talk about kind of outlining our next steps because ultimately this is, this is really a two-year process. This is how big and large this is. So really the process that we're kind of gathering is right now is to gather as much information in terms of, in terms of math teaching and learning throughout the district. And then kind of how we're going to go about, we're reporting out our concerns, our strengths, and we have questions. And ultimately, we will make a recommendation to the board, to the administration board of Eds for future action and future improvement. And ultimately this, we are working on ultimately a two-year timeline. So from this big data gathering that we had in this room, we had, I believe, about 10 or 12 data sets. Really, these are literally the areas that the teachers actually identified as they really wanted to investigate further. Looking at curriculum, not just curriculum across the whole span. Looking at grading, grading practices as in terms of, at the elementary school, middle and high, looking also at our supports in terms of investigating, are we, are we providing that necessary supports for our students to be successful? Also getting into resources, are we providing the best resources for our students and teachers to best support our expectation of excellent teaching and learning? And the last one is really kind of our best, the teachers, a teacher group is looking into expectations. And our impact on terms of our expectations on learners across the gamma in terms of how that impacts learning. I'm going to provide you a few small little samples of some of the data displays that we actually provide, that teachers were actually investigating. The first one that I'm going to give you here is, this is one of kind of highlighting some of the aspects related to curriculum and grading. This right here is, represents the grade four targets that we give back from the Smarter Balance Assessment. And if you actually, so if we, there are target A through L, these are specifically kind of outline how students are doing related to specific things that are in our curriculum, especially for the grade four. And we get all, we get, we get a report like this from grades three all the way through grade eight. And if you can see, one of the things that we talk about area of concern is maybe an area that we are looking to strengthen would be right around these three targets. Using the four operations with whole numbers to solve problems, getting familiar with factors and multiples, generate analyzed patterns. And again, it's just this self-analysis to kind of like where are students really knocking out of the park and where are we seeing improvements? So like right here, we've seen like some, some targets like F, G, and H have been, all our students are at or above in terms of the proficiency strand and we've seen improvement in some. And getting this report can really kind of best understand where are our strengths? What do we need to also improve in terms of the teaching and learning going on in our classroom? And this, and similar things that we get at the various grades. For example, one of the things, I remember coming to you, I believe in October, one of the things we, so there are some really good things there, but what we're actually trying to be is really critical of ourselves because ultimately that self, that self-analysis is ultimately going to lead to better teaching and learning going on. And similar things like we noticed in terms of was the Pythagorean theorem in eighth grade is one of those strands across the board that are students that we are looking to improve. So these kind of help guide in terms of our curriculum of subgroup that the teachers are investigating. This not only just went also to our three through five, we have, the teachers in these groups have actually put together surveys, asking all the different teachers across the district, what are these, what are these concepts and skills that students are really struggling at? What are the things that our students are really kind of doing well? So we want to, because we don't really get this granular data to the high school, so we, some of the, our curriculum group were kind of really focused on finding out this information from our teachers to kind of best understand. Also kind of identifying, we put the grading subcommittee kind of, kind of got some information about this. For example, do our elementary standards that we report out, how are, how are these standards in terms of how, how do they associate to what we're reporting out to our students and the families? So it kind of helped kind of, kind of better, kind of maybe do we, do we need to do some adjustments in rubrics or across the board to kind of help our reporting systems? Similar comment, I have another data report that I'm going to put right here is, we also looked at various aspects between how are high need students and non-high need students are doing? For those of you that, I've been in front of this board a number of times, we've talked about high needs. For, just a quick reminder, high needs are, is a classification that the state comes out with, that is a student that it can be in any one of these three categories. It could be any one, two, or even all three. We've got students that are in... We've got students that are in special education, students are identified as EL, or students are identified as free introduced lunch. A student could be any one, two, or three. So now, when we put together in our, in the, in the Smarter Balance online data system, we're after, kind of see how are our high-needs compared to our non-high-need students doing? And really, kind of what we're looking at is, you can really see a difference between our high-needs and non-high-need students. So our teacher now are investigating, are we providing the right SRBI and the special ed supports to help them be successful? Ultimately, we want all students to be leaving the grade levels, meeting these grade level expectations. Also, one of the things that are tied to expectations, we are looking at how the students, the recommendation process from fifth to sixth, because we've seen over time, a large, the percentage of students increased going into our accelerated middle school system. Also, we've seen an increase in terms of the students going into our double accelerated system. I believe, I don't have this in front of me, but at one time, probably about eight or nine years ago, we had about 17, 18 students going to our double accelerated. I believe this current year we're at 62. So again, going back, talk to the teachers. How are they doing? What are the things that they're being successful with? What are the things they struggle with? Are these students, as we follow them through all the way into, from middle school into high school, are they being successful? So we're always asking ourselves, being self-critical of ourselves in terms of our expectations, are they meeting the need to, as they move through our K-12 system? So this is just another quick example of, in terms of, in terms of a data point that really, on student outcomes, that really relates to this. One other subgroup that I kind of illustrated earlier is also looking at resources. So for example, a couple of years ago, we did adopt the Bridges in Mathematics. This is actually a screenshot that we took from an external group that, it's called Ed Reports, that actually does some evaluation of curricular materials, instructional resources. So for example, so when you see, for example, you look up here, Bridges is a very highly rated resource. See, for example, kindergarten, they got a 13 out of 14, this rating for focus and coherence, 16 out of 18 on rigor in math practices, and overall meets the expectations as we go through, and very highly rated in terms of usability. So we're doing, again, our self-evaluation of our current resources. Again, now, if we, now we look to big ideas as our current middle school resource. So again, if you, not as rated as highly as what we would want to, because we ultimately want to have a goal of putting the best resources for teachers and for learning of our students. So, and also going out even to our high school resources, some of the things. So just a quick kind of overlook, this is something that we are going to be reevaluating in terms of our process to determine, do we need to make a resource update at some point? And that is involved in the whole timeline of process of our two-year review. So ultimately, we started in the August, September timeline, this is really at the top of the page. In this room, we had a gamut of teachers kind of looking at the various data. They formed their subgroups, defining various questions, and they were actually going out and gathering more data right now. And then from here, we're going to be looking in January to look at the data analysis, and if they need to ask any other follow-up questions that they're looking at. And ultimately, now, to me, that March to May, make recommendations. This, to me, is also, well, the next step, after we get all the data and actually start identifying issues we really want to tackle, is to really kind of dive in to see, and start doing our own, the research, what does the literature say we should be doing to tackle these problems? Because ultimately, that is going to help guide us in the direction of what we need to do. We don't want to make any RAS decisions that the researchers say don't do. So that's going to help guide us. So later in the spring, we're kind of, kind of look to kind of, kind of firm up where our recommendations. Summer, some summer work in terms of help kind of doing some curriculum rewriting in terms of creating our drafts. Also, part of this is, one of the things I did recommend based off of the prior data point, we've already kind of started talking about, do we need to add in some summer support, especially from our transition years, from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth, to help schools, students be successful as they transition into the next level? So we do have a small initiative put into our, we'll see in our next budget proposal in terms of supporting those kids in those transition years. So, and then from the summer, kind of getting into that, and then similar to what we did, what was that, seven years, seven years ago, if we need to look at resources, we'll bring in resource presentations, and ultimately, come to the spring of, what is it, 2021, if you can, if you can actually believe it, would be a presentation of, to the Board of Ed, of an updated curriculum documents in relation to, for the, what is that, the 21, 22 school year. So ultimately, this is a very large project. It's a very highly inclusive project. If we want, ultimately, we want as many teachers involved in this process to help guide us to where we need to go. And that's ultimately what we're trying to get at, is get everyone involved. This is not, this is not a me thing, a Walter thing, this is an us thing. So ultimately, this is where we're going from, moving on out. So this is a fairly large and intensive process, but I think it's the best way to really, to kind of ultimately improve the, the teaching and learning going in our math classroom, to help achieve our district mission, ensuring all students are meeting the knowledge and skills needed to be successful. And from that, I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? This is Max Cunelli.
It's good to know, sorry, good to know, because obviously, these are anticipating what we would have asked you after the fact of, you know, what went into all this, so it's good to hear this ahead of time. Just a couple of questions. Let me find my pages, where I wrote that. One thing I would just throw out there as a thought, in doing all this evaluation, you know, as you say, you're looking at mathematics curriculum, implementation, strengths, concerns, questions. One thing that very specifically came to my mind is a reflection on the nature of the professional development that has supported the teachers. I must admit, I think especially of the elementary school teachers, whom I do not think of as going into elementary school teaching because math was their first love, and I think the level of support that they need with specifically the text that we have supplied them, you know, I just hope that that is a very specific folk, you know, not just fractions, et cetera, but, and what has been the nature of the support, what's helped you, what hasn't, et cetera? Because I know that's something I will be asking about later. So that was one. Also, something, just heads up to spring of 2021, that I will be interested in is seeing will be looking at, because at this point, all across, certainly Fairfield County, all across our Derg, everybody was making significant curriculum changes, and now we're all at this point, which, that was a great bit of history there, reminder that Common Core there, we made the changes, now everyone's worked with them, is that I'm definitely going to be looking to see some comparative data of, here's the growth we've made, here's the curriculum we've used, because of course, it was quite controversial what we were doing with kind of our own homegrown work there. How has that compared to the growth in other districts and what they've used? What can we steal? What can we, what's been working better for us than what they have? So I know that's something I will be interested in seeing. One thing I was curious about with all of this grading data, is there such a thing as at? There's, you know, approaching proficiency standard, above proficiency standard, what about at proficiency standard?
Yeah, that's kind of a quirk in how the Smarter Balance reports that out, because they go from a, okay, I'm just, a little, again, a little side lesson again here, they go from a four-level reporting system to a three-level reporting system. So that's a question that we've asked in terms of, but that's just how it gets reported to us. So I, but ultimately, it's, it gives us good information in terms of how our students are doing. We want to see all green. I mean, that's, that's our goal. So ultimately, then it kind of just highlights our areas that we really need to focus on. Ultimately, we want to, I think we're kind of taking it as the, the line between the yellow and the green is, there's your at.
You made a very, very passing reference to this, and I toss this out to you and also to Mr. Cavanna in the audience as one of two headmasters here. And that's the topic of summer work, is that, obviously, this is specifically the math department, and I'll put to Mr. Cummings, district-wide, I would love there to be some evaluation internally of the nature of the summer work that we're asking of our students from a very young age right through high school. What is its purpose? What is producing the, you know, the results that we need and want? It's, I think it's overdue. I mean, math elementary school has always been, you know, tweaked, we've, you know, tried with calendar, you know, packets, whatever, so that, there's always been a longstanding sense that questions are being asked, or at least at the younger grades. But I would, again, heads up, 18 months, that I would be very curious to know is that what is a value? Because obviously, the last thing any kid needs in the summer is busy work, and I value it, I think it can have value, but I would appreciate hearing more about that eventually.
That actually, from my, from my recollection, that is one of the questions, one of the groups actually, is, is actually querying. So it's something that is, I think, they're doing a really good job of kind of digging deep to some really, really good questions. So I really commend the teachers and the, and the committee chairs to pushing the thinking of, of some of their questions. So I, that's, that's one of the questions we always ask of the teachers, I have to get back, say, how, how did the summer pack go in terms of, is there any suggestions for improvement? Or, I think that's always our, in terms of our continual cycle of improvement, of always looking to find out what works and what can maybe needs adjusting.
Ms. Pica.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but in response to students being at grade level, if that's what we want to call it, Smarter Balance doesn't necessarily give those numbers, but the State Department of Ed gives student-specific targets for every subject that will say what is at that student's level. And do you get those student-level targets?
Ultimately, that's two different reports. Ultimately, the, we do not get, that big table of targets, A through H, we do not get that information on every individual student. We do not. We get overall targets on overall scale scores for every single student. What is the expected growth we want for them? But we do not get down to the fine-grained target information. We do get claim information for every single student, but that's one of the, that's probably one of the downfalls, we do not get individual student target information.
From the, from the State Department of Ed?
No.
Isn't that how they assess the growth metric on how our schools are?
The growth metric is based off of the overall scale scores, not the individual targets. But you can drill down to see what targets that were, are we struggling with as, at a school or as a district, who, in terms of what targets? But in terms of the targets, in terms of setting goals for, those, the growth metric is, they, it's a fairly complex formula that they determine, they break the kids up into eight various categories, and then each category, they look at their scale score, what was the 60th percentile growth for each scale score? So that's where that one is derived from, nothing really from the target information.
I mean, if, I think at that level, it's not really helpful, but if you wanted it, the state should be able to provide it for us, no?
No, that actually comes straight from Smarter Balance, not from the state.
The scale scores?
Well, yeah, the scale scores, we get all the scale scores for every single student, but not the target. No, like, so like the rating of those.
But the state should provide us the student-level target?
No, we get the targets.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't get to say, for example, how Johnny did on the 12 targets of fourth grade. We don't get down to that level of minutia, we don't get that in terms of our overall reports, but we do get, because there's not enough data to kind of, for a student, because there's only so many, it gets into some assessment design, statistical analysis, there's, there's a large standard error in measurement of a group getting it down to an individual student, they, they don't feel comfortable being able to make that measurement to an individual.
If I could jump in here for a second, I think one way to think of it this way is if you think about those targets that Dr. Rasmussen shared today, those are feedback on the curriculum, because as he said, there might be only four questions, three, four questions on each of those, you know, so that it's not a fair adjustment of, of one individual child, but if you look at 300 fourth graders, you get a better sense of curriculum. The scale score is your individual assessment benchmark.
Ms. Pica.
I was just going to ask a question and piggyback off of that. So for the PSAT and SAT data that they do through College Board, that is individualized, and so they can get specifically on each child.
We actually get actually very, very fine-grained data from the SAT and PSAT for every single student, for every single question. We can actually see how every student had performed on, so we can actually get into the portal and see how that. So that was part of our analysis of looking at, but we also looked at categories of questions in terms of our overall analysis when we were in this room looking with our teachers. So this is something that is also part of our work, and we're working with, say, our school-level data teams of getting into that portal. I'm actually going to a PD tomorrow with a group that will up in, up in Cass with Alan Bernstein. If you want to come, come on right up. Yes. So, yes, we do get that level of data, yes.
Ms. Jacobson.
I'm just on page, one of the focal areas for data gathering, the curriculum grading supports, resources, expectations. Just two follow-ups on that. I was wondering if somewhere in there embedded is assessments that are being used across pre-K 12 in terms of, by teachers? And if we already are or are looking to build those common assessments by course and by grade as part of this process, if we don't already have that? That's question number one, if you want to.
Well, I think that is part of our process, and I think it's also a larger district initiative that we're, we're currently working on, especially even related to our academic expectations, et cetera, is we're bringing in groups of teachers, kind of helping them create those common assessments to measure not only just the content, but also those, those 21st century skills. So that, that is a part of our process, even in terms of asking ourselves, are these assessments, a lot of these sometimes are on our initial run, always ask yourself the first time you give an assessment, is, did we get out of it what we intended to get out of it? So it's, it's in our continual growth of building assessment literacy across the district. My superintendent Cummings is doing a great job of helping facilitate across the district.
Okay, good. And then the, you know, we had the NIASC report recently, at least for Ludlow, I know we're waiting for wards as well, and I'm just curious if I, that will probably inform some of this well, just in math and other areas in terms of alignment, and I just am bringing that up as something that I'd be looking for in the 18 months too, to see how we change that kind of process, if at all, based on the NIASC report as well. District improvement plan, obviously.
Ms. Pica.
Can I just have a quick question? The NGSS test, is that broken down by strand? Because I know there's math in there.
That is, again, I think it's more by claim, it's a larger kind of, I can't specifically don't know the top of my head, but there, it is, it doesn't get down to the target level like we do in the math. So that's a state homegrown test.
In terms of the resources, now that our middle schoolers and high schoolers all have Chromebooks, is any, you know, are you looking for online resources that maybe can be brought to students sooner than, you know, looking for a new text?
Well, I think that goes in our, in our large process. Remember, any, any resource needs to be board-approved. So that'd be part of our process in terms of looking, delving into that is, to me, I think that's, that is a non-negotiable in terms of, because we always, we want to be encouraging. One of the things with our current resources right now, they do, they are effective in terms of, talking to the secondary level, provides all the resources provided to the two students for online. So that has been one of the positives of our current resource, it does have that. So I think that that'd always be one of the things that we do evaluate in terms of when we have our resource presentations. I think that we are investing in terms of the Chromebooks and being able to access a lot of these resources online, we would like to, to me, that needs to be continued.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Cummings, anything, final closing remarks on this one?
No, I, again, I just would like to thank Dr. Rasmussen for stepping up tonight and doing both the presentations. I think that, as he's discussed, we are, we're going to engage the board through a series of these conversations, because it is a, one, it's the first of these curricular areas to go back through this second set of revision, and we can deepen the work we're doing around it, but also because the topic is such an important topic and a relatively big topic, we want to make sure that the board is apprised along the way, and that your questions tonight will inform the work, the next stages of the work as well. So it is an iterative process, and I appreciate your participation in it.
Thank you, Dr. Rasmussen. Okay, moving on, update environmental testing at school. Update, environmental testing at school fields and sites. Mr. Cummings.
Okay, so a few things. Give me one second, I'll just get my notes. I'll go through the sites somewhat in order. We are, I think the primary issue right now for us would be two. One would be Jennings, and the other would be Fairfield-Ludlow High School. So let me talk about Jennings first. As I informed the community on Friday evening, we were not able to get in and do further digging at the two placecapes at Jennings. And that was really issues around, the site that is, has to take the soil that's been removed, has not yet signaled that they're ready to take that soil. So we've got soil backed up at Burrows Park. And the other issue is, the contractor is working to find a provider of clean soil. Because the soil that's going in, I don't know, this has been discussed that much, but the soil that's going into place has to be tested in advance as well. So Tian Bond, the environmental contractor for the town, is testing that soil. So they're in the process of testing the soil that would be coming in for backfill. So we were hesitant to go out and dig more holes unless we had soil to fill those holes. So we are hopeful, and this is, Mr. Papa George and I are, and he primarily are, working with the contractors around this, that our goal right now is to get those placecapes open for the week of break, because we expect that they would be put to high use if we're able to open them. So that's really where we're working now, with the contractor who does the digging and backfilling, the testing sites, excuse me, the testing companies and the environmental contractor, Tian Bond. My cautions on that are, though, always weather, that's one question. The second question is going to be about the ability to respond to testing results in a timely fashion. Those are things that are done by testing labs and often beyond the control of Tian Bond, the contractors. But that's a secondary issue that can come up and slow up the process. So those are the two primary things. We've had conversations with Mr. Vol, the principal at Jennings. We were able to, if we were able to get the fill and be able to put materials back in, we would hold the students in for a day to accelerate this process. Oh, and I apologize, I forgot, one of the other concerns clearly is, as you know, we went in, we tested, we pulled soil out, and then we retested. Those secondary tests revealed that not enough soil had been removed. So certainly, one of the factors we have to determine is if we go in now, when we go in again, dig again, that soil will have to be tested again. Did we get it all again? If we get to a place where there's still more contaminated soil, we go back through the process again. Is it a process, then, of at least maybe opening one of the placecapes? That will all depend on what the tests tell us. So we are working as quickly as we can on this, but we're going to be really driven by the results of what's in the soil. So before I go to anybody else, I guess maybe I should ask if there's questions about Jennings.
Any questions about Jennings? Okay, moving on.
Okay, let me talk about Fairfield-Ludlow.
Ms. Sleeper?
We had obviously gotten a lot of emails from the Jennings community, and one of the things was requesting additional balls and that sort of supplies. Did the principal ever reach out for the district to provide any additional resources for that type of stuff?
I think we received, yes, it was, I think, two weeks ago, we received a purchase order, and those things were provided to the school.
Awesome, thank you.
So Fairfield-Ludlow, we have, Mr. Papa George has a meeting there with OSHA on Thursday morning. So we're going to be getting, hopefully, from OSHA, the report from them. I'm not sure if we'll actually have a physical copy of the report in hand at that moment. According to OSHA, they're trying to get the report to us prior to the Christmas break. And again, as soon as we have that information, we'll share it with the community. But Mr. Papa George, Mr. Hatzis, Mr. Smoller are attending those meetings, that meeting on Thursday. On Thursday as well, Woodard and Curran, who did the initial air quality testing on the lower level, are coming back. They're replicating that testing in the areas that have been remediated, going back to the steam pipe issue and the PE teacher's office issue. They're going back and retesting those sites to see that the remediation was effective. And then they're going to be testing some additional classroom sites on other floors that historically, teachers have had some concerns about. And so while we've listed the rock, we're going to lift all the rocks and make sure that we've covered every base here to make, to clarify as many of these issues now while we're talking about it as we can. So that testing will take place on Thursday as well, and we go back through the cycle here where we'll get another report. So we're waiting on the OSHA report, we're going to be waiting on a secondary report from Woodard and Curran on the first set of testing, on that remediation, and then a second set of tests from Woodard and Curran will be coming through as well. So that's three potential reports coming out of Fairfield-Ludlow. And again, if those reports show something, then we go again through the iterative process of testing, remediating, retesting. So if there's any questions on Fairfield-Ludlow.
Mr. Peterson.
Just to be clear, I imagine that the areas that are going to be retested are not being used until those tests come back.
That is correct, thank you.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
Not that I think this is your area of expertise, but whatever, the things that they are finding that they are taking care of, is there, is there thought to be a correlation between what the staff was complaining about in terms of their physical manifestation of their environment, of what they felt they were in contact with? Is there a correlation, or are they actually two separate things, and we just happen to discover these things?
I think it's too early to tell, because the staff are not back in yet in that space. So, you know, we can go back and we can retest the indoor air quality. When staff return, I hate to say, but are there symptoms symptomatic again? Those are the things we have to kind of play out. We're going to do everything we can, and like I said, the retesting will determine that the, similar to the ground soil at Jennings, have we've gotten it all? But given the other areas of concern that the testing, has the Woodard and Curran testing provided, as well as the OSHA testing, now we'll have two separate testing entities in there, is there correlation between what they're finding? Is there some differences that they're finding, and how are we going to address those things? So I think that's one of the things we still have to determine. I don't, I would say this to you, while we found that steam pipe issue, and clearly had an impact on the sheet rock in the PE teacher's office and the adjoining rooms, that's a relatively small area, as you know, of this entire level. So how great the impact is of that, I mean, as you saw in the report for Woodard and Curran and Mr. Papa George's memo, there's been other areas that have been cleaned up, ceiling tiles removed. Will that have the cumulative, hopeful, the cumulative impact? We're just going to have to see.
Any other questions about Ludlow? Okay, seeing none.
Okay, so just a couple of quick things. And this is, we are waiting on testing results on Osborne Hill, on the area around the south parking lot there in the front of the building. Those areas have been covered with mats, and testing has occurred there. We're now getting, waiting for a remediation plan from the town on how to deal with that soil and when that will take place. That has to happen under a relatively tight timeline, so, but that's going to be pretty extensive work, and clearly mess up the parking lot. So that's certainly something that we can, we're going to try to take place over the Christmas break. And then McKinley, the area north of the building where the former placecape was, outside the Library and Media Center there, we're waiting on testing results from Tian Bond on that area. They went back in and did some further testing. But we're not yet sure what that testing revealed, and that would then determine what the extent of that remediation plan. But that area remains cordoned off. So I believe that's it, unless I forgot something, and if I did, I apologize.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, just a question about Osborne Hill, because I pass it like a gazillion times a day. Now, you said there was testing that's been done, because I did see a couple of days, including today, there were people digging dirt up there. So are they still doing testing? Or is that something, I just wasn't clear on?
I'm going to have Mr. Papa George come up and double-check on that. Thank you.
So, yes, they're continuing to do testing. When they first went out and did their initial testing, they were hitting hard blacktop about six inches down, what would be equal to the actual parking lot on the other side of the curb. So now they brought out some bigger machines, and they're trying to dig through that to see what the extent is below the actual pavement. So, yes, the people you see digging are from Tian Bond, and they're continuing, they're working with DPW, I shouldn't say just Tian Bond. DPW is digging, and Tian Bond is taking samples.
And so I guess the question is, so if they're still taking samples now, how, because I know Mr. Cummings had mentioned they're trying to get a fairly quick turnaround, especially trying to use the holiday break, is that realistic, if they're still taking samples now?
We're hopeful at that, but we can't say, because it all depends on the lab turnaround for how, and how much remediation is going to need to be done over there. We don't know at this time.
Okay, yeah, because I could just, if there's a lot of the parking lot that needs to be cordoned off, if there are, you know, if it's during the school year, that could be problematic, because it's kind of a crazy place, and it's on a really busy street, so, yeah, which I'm sure you're aware of.
Any other questions about, Ms. Sleeper?
Wasn't paving over dirt one of the possible remediation standards for some of the contaminated soil?
Yes.
So we're ripping up the pavement to test the dirt under it, to then possibly pave over it again, to dig it out and then pave over it again? Or what, I feel like I'm misunderstanding something.
Where the paving exists, and Mr. Papa George, if I screw this up, you come running back. Where the paving exists, it would be left, you could leave it alone, where in the soil next to the blacktop, where those PAHs exist, that soil can't exist like that. So the soil has to be remediated. And underneath, like, I suppose, and again, I am not the expert here, but you could scrape the soil up and just expand the blacktop, make the parking lot bigger, I suppose would be one possible answer. But given that that soil is rested on top of that, and there's probably some degradation in the blacktop underneath, that's just something that they're going to have to determine how big a remediation project it is. But if it was blacktop alone, that would be an effective cap for, because people identify it for what it is.
This might not be a question for you, but just thinking about the extent of this contamination in the town, and the expenditure that our town is going to spend to remediate it, is there some sort of talk about a committee to look at what is the right way? Like, what is the most fiscally sound way to tackle some of these challenges? Does it actually have a health benefit to rip out, so we take the six inches of dirt out? And then does it have a health impact to rip out that blacktop so that we can test below it and dig that out? Like, is that having a meaningful health impact on our children and our staff and all of us, rather than just taking off that six inches and leaving the blacktop? Just as one example, but there are several examples like this in town. And I'd be curious, like, who exactly is making the decisions about what type of remediation we're doing? And what is the cost-benefit analysis of that versus a different type? Because this is money we could be spending on something else that might actually have a greater impact on our kids' and staff's health. I was talking to somebody the other day, and if we really wanted to make, spend this much money to make our kids healthier, would that actually mean putting sinks into the classrooms and having a handwashing procedure? Just, you know, if we're going to spend $1.8 million to do this type of remediation, is it actually having the most bang for our buck on improving the health outcomes for our children and our residents? And I don't know who the right person is to ask that question, or if there's another place for that discussion, but I think it's something we should have, as this seems like possibly a longer path that we're on, not only as a board, but as a town.
You're right, I'm probably not the person to ask that question. But I would say this, one of the questions you asked in there, and I want to just clarify is, those decisions are being made, as we know, but worth reminding, those decisions about what to do and how to respond right now are being done by the town health department, Tian Bond, and the state as appropriate. So I think you raise a greater kind of question away, a different aspect of looking at that, that I would be deferential to others about how to approach it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I did forget Mill Hill. I just realized, I forgot Mill Hill. So Mill Hill I would put with, right now, with Osborne and McKinley in terms of us are waiting right now for remediation plan and how to address that area back by the hill and by that walkway. So just basically, we're waiting on that one.
Okay. Approval of 2020, 2021 capital non-recurring projects. Has the Board of Education approved the 2020, 2021 capital non-recurring projects? Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mrs. Max Canelli. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Asa?
Just for the record, there's been no changes since the presentation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, seeing that this is a voting item, we'll go to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to the capital non-recurring projects, I invite you to come forward. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Fratelli, Ms. Pickham, Ms. Sleeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Fratelli, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes. Update, Maintenance Department move. Mr. Papa George, if you want to come up.
So we don't have much to report at this point. We've got our permits all approved, so we are going to start building actually this week. The landlords have vacated the property as of today, as a matter of fact. So we are moving along. By the end of this week, early next week, we're hoping by Monday, the latest Tuesday, to actually have inspections and be ready to start sheetrocking and closing up the office space in the back. We do have Myers scheduled for the week of the 16th to start the move process, so we're hoping everything will go smoothly through. Any questions?
Any, Mr. Peterson?
Just a quick kind of tangential question. The transportation shed heat issue, are they well-supplied for the period of time they're going to need to be in that facility?
So the heat is working over there. We were able to put some Band-Aids on the system to get it working enough to throw some heat into the room. We also supplied, as of today, two additional electric heat units, just in case they needed it. I mean, it was 60 degrees today, but we want them to be prepared, and we have two weeks left over there.
Mr. Asa?
With regard, not just to transportation, with the other departments moving, I have some concerns that we're scheduling moves for the week of the 16th, but are you saying, have we started to build out?
We are starting to build out as of Wednesday. We are scheduling the Maintenance Department to move on the 16th, that's the larger of the move. The transportation, we will not move until the week of Christmas, the 23rd, because the buses are on the road, so we're doing it when the buses are not on the road during that week period. We will have, the move will actually take place on the 23rd, when there's no school. And the IT department is scheduled to come in on the 27th to get everything up and back running for them. So when they return from the Christmas break, and those buses go back on the road, they will be up and running.
Is any of that IT work or anything contingent upon Bridgeport Building Department inspections, Fire Department inspections, et cetera?
The only inspection we have to be considerate of is the framing inspection, which will happen either Monday or Tuesday of next week. The electrical inspections and everything, we have permission to do what's called a back of wall. So the office space will be sheetrocked, painted and everything. The outside area, if there's any concern about getting a permit or something, the outside part of that wall will not be sheetrocked and closed up until the improved, of Building Department approval. So they've given us that permission. They know our timeline, and they're willing to work with us on it.
Okay, so it sounds like their office is going to be up and running regardless whether the rest of the building is completed.
Correct. That is our priority, is that. We are not intending to even move our central stores location until everything else is up and settled. Central stores is going to be a process. When we move it, we're trying to run down inventories and stocks, so it makes it easier for transition over to the new location. over to the new location.
And we have a contingency plan if something were to not go right with telecommunications and IT?
The IT should be all set. We actually have, the cable modem was installed last week, so that is all set. We just have to transfer everything over.
What about all those, just curious, all those lines that had to be run that was part of the move, is that all done?
So, IT made the arrangements and had a temporary cable modem installed over there so that we can go up and running. We're still waiting for a final result for the fiber optic line to run over there, but that should, should not stop us because of the temporary service that we had put in already.
Okay, and then you said that the big move was the, the maintenance and whatnot, and the supervisors for that department, everything will be prepared for them to be in place as well?
Yes, they, they will be in there and they will be very part of that move. They will be there for every step of it and oversee it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Sorry to come back to you, just a random thought. We're jamming a lot of stuff into the break, obviously. Are there things, maintenance projects elsewhere in the district that we're having to either put off or subcontract out because our staff will be busy with the move?
No, not at this time. We haven't had anything major come up. We're actually, we are jamming a lot into the break, but we are, but we are hopeful actually during the actual break, the build will be complete so that we can start moving stuff in there. So, that will free up the maintenance guys again. The supervisors, on the other hand, will be there unpacking and helping move stuff around. The only person that over break we're hopeful that we're tying up would be the electrician because all the equipment coming over needs to be tied in and everything, but we do have a second electrician for emergencies. And we're not even, we're not intending to tie all trades up. So, we have a plumber who's going to be doing some work. We have our second plumber who's going to still be out in the schools. Same thing with electrical. HVAC, there's minute, there's virtually no work for them, so they will be out in the schools. And for carpenters, we have three, two of them are tied up on this project right now, but we're hoping to free one up by that break, so we'll have two out in the schools.
Great, thanks so much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Papa George. You can go. Approval of custodian maintenance contract. That the Board of Education hereby moves to provide funding for and to otherwise approve and accept the tentative agreement reached between the Board of Education and the Custodians Union for a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. The Board further delegates to the Chair the authority to execute the final contract document on behalf of the Board. Can I have a motion? Mr. Peterson, second. Mr. Asa? Mr. Asa was the Board's liaison to this bargaining unit. We usually do not have discussion about our contracts, but being that he was the representative, I'm going to just ask him to give a brief statement just about this contract.
As the liaison to the committee, I would recommend to the Board that we approve this contract as is.
Thank you. As this is voting, do we go to the public for this? I should know this and I apologize. If any members of the public would like to speak to this, this is a voting item. I invite you to come forward. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Pitco, Ms. Leeper, Mrs., Ms. Rotelli, excuse me, Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Pitco. Motion passes 801. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Asa, for your work on this on behalf of the Board. Approval to amendment of the 2019, 2020 Fairfield Public Schools student calendar. That the Board of Education approved the amendment to the Fairfield Public Schools 2019, 2020 student calendar to allow for the January 14th, 2020 special election per the enclosed memo. Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, second. Mrs. Gerber. Just to put this in some context, as you all know, when Mrs. Kupchak won the election for first select woman, her state seat became open. The governor then set a special election date to fill her seat in the 132nd District. That special election date was set for January 14th. This is not a townwide election. It is only one district. However, there are four polling places. Fairfield Ludlow High School, Fairfield Woods Middle School, Mill Hill Elementary School, and Roger Sherman Elementary School are all polling places. There are over 3,000 students that attend those schools. The registrar of voters does have the ability to change the polling locations. However, their charge is to do what is in the best interest of the voters of this town. And from their perspective, maintaining stable polling locations is in the best interest of the voters of this town. Some research has shown that up to 3%, it could, changing a polling location could change voter turnout by 3%. And the change is felt not only for the current election, but for elections, subsequent elections. About five years ago, people may remember, the Fairfield changed the polling locations. The registrars of voters still have people that don't know where to vote. So, there was concern about moving the polling places for this election. They could have done it if we pushed back. The feeling was that we wanted to be good partners with the town, appreciate the civic responsibility that we have as a Board, that the school district has as a member of the community, and we did not ask for the registrar voters to move the polling places. So, that is number one. The registrar voters would have preferred to keep the schools open and just have polling conducted in the schools while students were in school. They're willing to change the location of the polls within those buildings. The superintendent consulted with our school safety unit, the Fairfield Police Department. The Fairfield Police Department did not feel comfortable having school in session while voting was occurring. So, that is number two. And number three is where we are right now for the motion before you. Mr. Cummings, did I leave anything out or anything you would like to add to that?
No, I, thank you. I think that pretty much covers the process that this is taking place in, and I think we'd only emphasize that what we want, we, moving forward from this particular issue, we, we want to engage the town in a conversation about addressing future issues like this so that we, they can be avoided as much as possible.
Agreed. Part of the, given the shortened timeline from when this announcement was made and when the special election is going to occur, and given that it is the holiday season, we do not want the Board to in any way inadvertently throw actions to disenfranchise any of the town's voters. The democratic process is sometimes inconvenient, and this is one of those instances. I do wish that it wasn't the case. No one is happy that we have to, to close school, but as the memo does indicate, we will be using that day for professional development and students will not have school. Mr. Cummings, you want to give any just detail about the type of professional development that will be given that day?
Yes, let me, let me talk about a couple of things that we want to do that day. One, on the aspect of the adults, the staff, and what we want to do with professional development to give you some overview of that, which will also come up in a bit later in the superintendent's report. But also, because one of the questions that's come up around planned student activities for that day. So, what we were proposing is in the morning, given that this, this date has fallen into our lap, trying to make the, we're certainly intending to make the best out of it. As the Board well knows, we have a lot of work to do on developing the next iteration of the district improvement plan. We have a commitment to have that ready by the, and voted on and approved by the Board before the end of the school year or at the, at the end of the fiscal year. It's an opportunity then, as stated from, from the outset this year, we are looking to increase stakeholder involvement in the creation of that plan. January 14th presents as a terrific day, an invaluable day to get all of our staff, teaching staff involved in feedback on the, the district. Essentially engaging them in what's called the SWOT analysis, with SWOT standing for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. What, what is good about the district? What does the district have to improve on? We will engage staff at the building level in these conversations. We're going to gather that data in the morning, and that data will then inform and be shared with the Board. My hope, and I've had some conversations with, with members of our staff, how we can collect that data electronically, catalog it through, through a spreadsheet, through a database, and then share that information back out to the community to get feedback, additional feedback, and then working with a steering committee through central offices and with the Board's guidance, begin to move forward into action planning, prioritization, those types of things. So, that would be the intent of the majority of the morning of January 14th. We would then turn the afternoon over to the, to either district work at the elementary level or to school-based work at middle schools and high schools. So, that would be the, the PD plan for that day, and we will flesh that out as we move forward from this. The, there are, been questions raised, there are, it's a Tuesday, so there are games, particularly games at Ward are not so much an issue, but there is a game in the evening at Ludlow, a basketball game. I've spoken with Lieutenant Waya from Fairfield Police Department. It is possible that because the polling place is in, in the cafeteria, we could hold a game in the, in the, in the gym that, that evening. So, sports activities would continue for students. We had a concert at Fairfield Woods that's going to, the staff is looking to move. I know of at least one field trip at an elementary school, and I've not yet been able to speak with the elementary principal, but we're going to clearly have to move those types of things. So, other type of student activities, things like that, we're going to have to adjust, almost approach it as if it was a snow day. And so, we're in the process of still identifying those things and making moves as, as expected.
One approach for this, we could have just closed the school for staff and teachers, I mean, staff and students for this day, and add a, a day on to the end of the year. But given the work that needs to be done for the district improvement plan, it seemed like this would be a good use of time, and I know that everyone is concerned about keeping children in school into June. So, that is why we claimed it as a professional development day and did not just make it a vacation day and extend the school year. So, with that, that's the background of why it is on the agenda the way that it is, and I open it up to the Board for any comment or discussion. Ms. Leeper?
I just want to say that as a candidate in the special election, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Yeah, I had, as soon as we got the memo about this, I had shared my concerns with Mr. Cummings. I have, you say compare this to a snow day, and I'm sure I've said for the record many, many times how much I despise and loathe snow days, and that includes tomorrow. But, you know, for, for me, losing a day like this, it has a direct curricula impact. And if we're ever to argue that it doesn't have that impact, then let's look at the whole calendar. It does absolutely impact it. It also impacts our community and our families, and I know you, I'm not saying that the administration in any way is not sensitive to that. I just feel the need to give voice to it. It is a tremendous inconvenience to our working, to our families that have both working parents or the, whoever is the parent in the household working. And we speak about the financial impact if we were to move it. That was one concern that had been raised to me, and I just turned right around and say, I'd like to add up the thousands of dollars that parents are going to be spending on childcare for that day. I mean, so no matter what, there's a financial impact, it's just who's bearing that burden. So, you know, I immediately was wrestling with what I thought about this amendment, I mean, with this change to the calendar. My first thought was, why can't we have school? And it's smaller number of location, which means that the burden on, on the police department was significantly less. And as I found out just a few hours ago, Greenwich is also having a special election for the exact same type of circumstance. Eight schools involved in the polling locations, they've decided to have school, and that the police department has committed itself to providing extra security for that. And that our town, and I, again, I think the world of our, of our police department, but that they can't provide this increased security so we can keep four schools open. I would hope that that can be a topic for further dialogue. And I cannot believe that they cannot secure these locations. I just can't. I don't like closing the school. I had been going quite actively after the whole notion of, I think we should just close the four schools. I don't like the idea that four out of 17 schools are dictating the course for all 17. I did hear, you know, this is where data can tell the story you want it to tell. I look at it as fewer than 25% of our schools. Mrs. Vitale then points out, you know, but this is 3,000 of, you know, of our students, so fair point there. But my goal is simply to keep the schools open, moving it. I'm still in favor, I think we could move these locations. I think people can be educated about this. But I hear all of these arguments, and then the, the final point, and I think this is something that we as a Board have, we keep facing this, usually comes up in the context of graduation date in the past few years. But Boards prior to us worked very hard to fight for a 182 school day year for our students. If that doesn't mean something to us, then let's have that conversation. But if it means something to us, and it means something to me, then we stick to it. And so, that's where I've just, you know, I, I wanted to hear the conversation here at the Board, but all of those told make this a very hard decision. And I'm, and it's not that I'm criticizing any facet of this, it's just put us in a position where I don't like it, and so looking for a path forward.
Mr. Peterson?
I want to piggyback on that a little bit. I was speaking with Mr. Asa about this earlier today, and the way I have been thinking about the 182 versus 181 issue is, do we believe in a 182 day year, or do we believe in 180 days with two as contingency? And I would argue that we should not view them as contingency, we should have a very high bar for removing them. Last year, you may recall, when we removed the extra day in order to try to accommodate an easier graduation day, it was a somewhat different situation. It was later in the year, there was less likelihood of, you know, natural events intervening in, in that period of time. And so, I have, I have great reluctance about just lopping off a day. That being said, I, there are no good answers here, and I do think, as Mr. Cummings said, that this should be part of a conversation, a broader conversation that we need to have as a Board and as a town about what to do about these situations going forwards. We don't find ourselves in these, in these situations in future circumstances.
Ms. Asa?
I'd like to echo and say I agree with everything that's been stated, with one caveat being that I probably wouldn't be in favor of just closing the four schools. But everything else that was stated, I am lockstep. The loss of instructional time is a big price to pay. And one of the things that I had hoped to pursue and spoke in detail with Mr. Cummings about was swapping January 14th for the May 26th P-day, PD day. In essence, by doing that, we would be maintaining 182 days and the same number of PD days. And I'd like to just give Mr. Cummings an opportunity to comment on that for the public because the answer that I was given has swayed my decision to further pursue that, but I would like to be, come back to me if you would, but Mr. Cummings, if you could touch on why you feel that May 26th is so valuable that we cannot do a swap?
Certainly, and, and thank you. That question came up, and I, I want everyone to know that I did look at this very carefully because, again, to Ms. Max and Kelly's point, that we are very aware of, about the impact of our families as well as the, we don't take any of our instructional time, no matter the days or minutes in the day lightly. But when I weighed the, the value of that day, we, we asked for that to be included in the adoption of the 1920 calendar. We've put forth that same course. We've put forth that same corresponding day in the 2021 calendar, based on the experience we had with using that day last year in May of 2019. What that day allows us, that we don't have, is it allows us to take a good look back at the year prior to rushing out through the end of the school year. I mean, anybody who's spent any time in school knows that June 1st comes, and then it's graduation, and people are gone. What May 26th allows us to do is an opportunity for the staff to be involved in providing feedback on the school improvement plans. It gives feedback to the groups that the board has committed money to in the current budget. We're going to be put forward in the upcoming 2021 budget as well, some of about $50,000 for staff to come in over during the course of the summer, take the information that staff, that their greater number appears is provided on May 26th, and then build the next iteration of the school improvement plan. On top of that, a couple of corresponding factors this year that those teams will be working with that they didn't deal with in 2019, and that is, one, we're going to be, while a new district improvement plan won't be finalized at that point, by late May, we'll have a very good understanding of what that's going to look like, what the major initiatives are, and that will be an opportunity to begin to educate staff and close the year out with staff around the next district improvement plan, prior to them coming back in August. And also, we are working right now to raise expectations in our school improvement plan. One of those expectations is we're going to be looking for more work around actual student data in those and setting goals based on student data for student achievement increases. So that's going to be a new level of learning for our staff as well. So I expect that the May 26th date, in addition to providing this reflective activity time, will also be a time of new learning for our staff. The afternoon of that day then allows the school, we engage, each of the schools works on this individually, but essentially they all engage in the same protocol. And then in the afternoon, the schools have an opportunity to go back and look at their own works, look, things specifically they did in their school improvement plans, and have a chance to recap the year as well as to move on. So it's an important day that we have that draws closure to the professional learning in a sense of the district. And as I said, when I looked at that, and I looked at the commitment that the board has made to that, and that the staff have made to that, and that the value they founded in this first year, I can't in good conscience bring that forward as an alternative without undermining the improvement work in the district.
Thank you. All that being said, I think, as Mr. Peterson said, there are no good answers here. And I reluctantly move forward in supporting closing schools this day, but we can't lose all of that instructional time. And based on a lot of discussion and back and forth, and Mr. Cummings working with the administrators and the staff, I would like to put forward an amendment to this motion. And, do I have to make a motion for that? So I would like to make a motion to create an amendment to the motion on the table, where after the word "memo," we insert, "and that March 10th, 2020, will become a full school day for students," and end the quote there. March 10th is a early dismissal, yes? Oh.
How does it sound on the table? How is this going to be?
Yes, sorry. March 10th is currently scheduled as a early dismissal for P, pre-K through 12 for professional development. While I'm not thrilled that we're only going to get a couple hours of instructional time back, it's something. And I think that this is, in consultation with Mr. Cummings, this is doable and manageable, and some of the work that would have been done on March 10th can be accomplished in January. That being said, I'd like, like I said, put this motion forward, but just to reiterate that moving forward, we do have the possibility of other situations like this coming up at any time, including in this year. I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but that being said, it's been mentioned that we need to have a broader conversation with the town, with the registers, with the police department. Those conversations need to start immediately, maybe right after Christmas. But in January, we need to have discussions, starting in January, on how do we handle this if this pops up again before the end of the school year, so we are prepared? Because I can say right now with certainty that I will not support going to 180 days if this happens again.
Just to reiterate, we can add on to the end of the school year. We can, for instructional time. I just want to, not in the midst of this discussion, that that is an option as well.
Yes, you are correct, but I do.
And I agree with you that this is absolutely a discussion that needs to be moving forward, that we need to have with other town bodies and with the police department. And, you know, we talk about bringing in extra security, and speaking to some parents, and in past discussions, we know that there is mixed feelings about how parents feel about having an increased police presence in the schools while children are there. That is also part of the discussion. But I'm going to give the floor to Mrs. Cannelly, because she was the second to that motion, and address the motion on the table.
Yeah, thank you. And again, no good option here, but I do appreciate Mr. Asa coming up with that, and that he vetted it past Mr. Cummings ahead of time so that there was some conversation and no surprise at the table about this. And I will be supporting this amendment. It is picking up, you know, a few hours, you know, so it kind of brings us to 181 and a half, which is going to have to do. I don't, I do believe that picking up a half day in March is more valuable than picking up the time in June. I'm a teacher who teaches till the very end of June. If they're in my class, I am instructing them, but there's no question that the nature of that in June is quite different. I also appreciate the fact that this is preceding AP exams, so that that time, instructional time leading into that is something that I am sure that those high school teachers will appreciate. So this, I'll just leave it at that. So I appreciate your putting this amendment forward.
Thank you, and I will also be supporting this amendment. When we had this discussion, this all happened rather quickly. We, board leadership met with the superintendent, we, you know, had to post the agenda. This was the plan forward. After the posting of the agenda, we, you know, we had the discussion about professional development day, because it makes, you know, one of the first questions would be, is there anything else that we can reclaim? I know this board, when we were discussing the calendar, there was concerns about all the early dismissals that we had in March due to elementary school conferences. We couldn't eliminate one of those early dismissal days at that time. Now that we have additional time for professional development, I am happy that we're able to do it now. So I will be supporting this. I bring it back to the rest of the board for any other comments. Seeing none, to the public on the motion, I mean, the amendment, to the amendment to the main motions, sorry.
Yes, Bob Smoller, I'm here as a math AP teacher. First of all, I am full supporter of this amendment. Every minute of instructional time on AP classes is critical before May 5th or whenever the test happens to be. Adding a day at the end of the year doesn't really help because the tests are already over. The one request that I would make is that you also take a look at the schedule. I don't have the odd even schedule in front of me, but it would be very important for us that whatever day January 14th is, day 1, 2, 3, 4, because we're on a four-day rotation, that it, that same day matches up with what we end up making March 10th. And March 10th might be a different day right now than January 14th from a 1, 2, 3, 4 standpoint. So if you're losing on, if you're losing class time on January 10th, possibly an AP class or something like that, it would be great to get that class time back on that March 10th date, or as much as possible. We already lose an enormous amount of time, assemblies, fire drills, lockdown drills, you know, class time that you're expecting to have, you don't end up getting, and you having to adjust your pacing and everything else, it becomes very difficult. And as I said, the AP classes are on a very tight timeframe. We only meet every other day. Kids are absent for a whole 88 blocks, 88 minutes blocks, you end up trying to catch them up. It's very difficult. So it would be great to have that time back on the same basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the board, any other comments before we vote on the amendment? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
One very quick, very just operationalizing question. Would that impact, for example, at the high school, the end of the semester? Will that get pushed out today?
Thank you, and thank you for that question, and I appreciate Mr. Smoller bringing that up. One thing I forgot to mention as we were prepared for this conversation was, I know Mr. Hatzis and Mr. Cavanna had a conversation about this. Mr. Hatzis and I spoke yesterday about this, and the headmasters are working with the schedule for both that need around semester courses and exam preparation, as well as Mr. Smoller's concern about the AP and swapping those dates.
Any other questions before we vote on the motion? Ms. Gerber.
Just that I checked, and January 14th is three and March 10th is four in the rotation, the four-day rotation, so they are different.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote on the amendment to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we are voting now on the amendment to the main motion. Does it need to be read again? Does everybody remember it? Would you, Ms. Gerber?
The amendment is added to the main motion, so the main motion is that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the Fairfield Public Schools 2019-20 scrutin calendar to allow for the January 14th, 2020 special election, per the enclosed memo, with the new language being, and that March 10th, 2020, will be a full school day for students.
All in favor of the amendment? Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Pico, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Sleeper, motion passes 801. Thank you. Back to the main motion. We've been waived the reading. If the public would like to speak to the main motion, I invite you to come forward. Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor. Ms. Rotelli, Mrs. Pico, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Abstentions? Sleeper, motion passes 801. Thank you. First reading of the 2020-2021 Capitol Projects. Mr. Papa George, invite you back up to the mic.
Okay, so this year, we have two Capitol projects we are moving forwards through the town. The first one, I'm sure you're all familiar with, is the Osborne Hill Roof Project. You'll find in your packet the 12, they call it the 14-point, but the 12 questions for the Board of Finance. There's a detailed breakdown of the cost. There's also, we'll do the ed spec separately. So that's the first project you'll see there. The second project you'll see, I'm sure you're all also familiar with, is the Walter Fitzgerald, the purchase and the needed immediate repairs for the building. That's the, again, you'll see the 12-point questions and the cost breakdown for that project as well in there. If you have any questions about those.
Any questions, Mr. Asa?
With regard to the Walter Fitzgerald campus, you have brought us updates along the way as far as costs associated with it. Are we confident that with this number, we will be able to accomplish all of our construction renovation goals?
So I have, and I should have included this in your packets, and I can get it to you, which is a spreadsheet that we, a spreadsheet that we did that breaks down the actual costs. We reached out to separate vendors to actually get pricing and costs so that we can put this packet together for the approval. This will actually cover all the costs for the projects that we've talked about. Moving forwards, we would like to possibly move this into a Phase 1 of 2, with the second phase being, as we've discussed in the past, the air conditioning. And also, the state has said that they would like us to do some ADA improvements to the building as well, so possibly as a Phase 2 to put the air conditioning in, and then also an ADA improvements.
Okay, so to be clear, in this request does not include air conditioning?
It does not. We did not include the air conditioning in there because the cost just to get pricing to do the air conditioning was going to be so high that we did not budget it for this year. So we are still moving forwards with the district-wide air conditioning RFPs, and that school will be included. Once we get pricing from that, we can pull that out of the RFP and use it.
So the reason I bring it up is because there's window replacement listed here, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there are currently window units in any of those?
There's some split units and, I believe, one window unit in the main office area.
So only one window unit that we would basically lose?
We would, yes, we would lose.
Because with window replacements, we're not going to be putting in windows that are going to be able to accommodate.
They would be awning or trough-type windows, so they would not accommodate an air conditioning unit.
Okay, and so the split units would remain for the time being?
Correct.
So basically, the building would operate. Now, with the water intrusion, abatement, painting, window, are there any concerns with regards to limited HVAC and fresh air causing any issues for a couple of years, let's say if it's that what it took to get air conditioning?
At this time, we did not. Again, the windows would be operable, either trough or awning-type windows, so there would still be some opening windows. A lot of the windows in there currently that are fully openable are not operable because of the condition. So we wouldn't be creating a worse condition, we would be creating a better condition. We're getting a better, better water intrusion protection, better roof, so we're kind of eliminating moisture and other issues within the building. We would definitely want to move forwards with the Phase 2 of air conditioning, fresh air, and the ADA improvements.
So would that be a Capitol non-recurring, or would that have to be worked into our waterfall?
That would depend on what we get back on pricing for air conditioning, the building, as well as adding, so it would most likely end up in a Capitol project again.
Okay, and just to be clear for the public, this $5 million includes the potential purchase of the building, but we have not done that yet, so that still has to be completed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson, follow by Ms. Jacobson.
I just have a couple of questions about Osborne Hill. Just to refresh my memory, I'm not sure whether we've covered this. When the problems first arose in the spring, we ran into warranty issues with the, have those been resolved at all? Or is that still being processed?
It's still being processed. We're still working with our attorneys.
And we're not, we're not expecting in these plans to get any recovery from that?
No.
That it would be gravy if we did?
It would be, but we did not plan for that, because there's no guarantee at this point.
And despite the fact that it looks like Silk Town helped prepare the bid, they were the ones who did the work, and we were pleased with them.
Correct.
It's still going to be bid out, though.
It will be bid out. Silk Town, we use because they've done many of our roofs. They usually win most of the bids, so we relied on them to provide pricing for us for this project.
Okay, that's all I had.
Ms. Jacobson.
I had a similar question, as Mr. Peterson, about the, I had asked about the warranty when this first came up, and I'm just curious, what did that warranty cost us originally?
I don't have the cost of the warranty. I can get it for you.
And, okay, thank you. And the legal that we are pursuing regarding the warranty, are we using in-house legal for that, or are we using our outside source?
We're using an outside source, so I can get you pricing for that if you'd like.
So I see in the next iteration of this roof project, there is another warranty. Do we have a breakout price for that warranty?
We do not. I can see if we can get that, because again, they provide pricing, but it will have to go out the bid, so they, I can find out what number they use for their warranty. However, it would just be their recommendation, not the actual bid pricing as of yet.
Do you happen to know if there has been any other warranty issues that we've ever run into? Because I feel like we're paying for the warranty, now we're paying for the legal. legal.
Yep.
We're not hopeful that something will happen. We're putting another warranty in, so I'm just trying to justify how we're going about this. It's a little bit frustrating.
Our PM contractor actually does a great job with preventive maintenance on the roofs, and when they do come across issues with the roofs that are under warranty, the bill does go directly to the warranty company. We've had great success with the other warranties. We actually have success with the current warranty holder for Osborne at other locations. They've been able, we've repaired at no cost to us.
Was there just something special about this issue for them that they decided to not?
I don't want to get into the legal.
You can't talk about that right now?
Yeah.
That's good to know, though. I feel like that's helpful to understand that there is a value to this, and this just happens to be an anomaly to the situation.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's good. I also share some concern about the mechanical means of fresh air and AC situation at Walter Fitzgerald Project. So if you are thinking that we're going to need to build in a Phase Two to this project, which would make sense if we're not doing it now, I'm a little concerned about bumping something else out, or are you thinking just adding it to an existing?
At this time, we're thinking about just adding it to the existing. As I've said since I took this position on, we are going to be looking at the waterfall and making a lot of changes, updates, adding to it. When we went before the Board of Finance, we made that same promise to them to be updating it as needed, because they actually did also come back and say that we look very light in our projections going out, and we explained that we will be updating. So there will be new projects appearing in there. At the same time, we also explained that most of our large improvement projects, like Mill Hill and Holland Hill just finishing, are coming to more towards the end. We will still be doing projects at schools, but not the major $20 million projects at this point.
Sorry, I have a couple more. Oh my God, now that, I forgot what it was.
Think about it. Ms. Lieber?
Is there, for the Osborne Hill project, is there any opportunity to do any of the work that possibly putting in HVAC would require while we do the roof?
Not without having full engineering specs and drawings. It wouldn't, to put curbing in for units, that wouldn't be going in, wouldn't make sense at this time. It's something we can engineer in afterwards. It does require cutting the roof, but they're done professionally and flashed in, so at this time, it wouldn't make it better for us to do. It's not a cost savings to do it now. As a matter of fact, we'd have to front the engineering services to do it.
Okay, but so that we will possibly be putting in this new roof and having to rip some pieces out if we go ahead with the HVAC, but you're saying nonetheless, it's still more cost-effective to do it this way?
Correct, because we're not talking large sections. We're talking maybe a foot wide by eight feet long, six feet long, to hold a unit in place between structural engineering steel underneath the roof and then re-flashing it back in. It's not like we're ripping out a 20 by 20 section and then replacing it.
Thank you for that. And one other question, are there any opportunities for solar on these new roofs?
For Osborne Hill, as a matter of fact, we have spoken with the solar engineers, the solar companies on that, and they're actually working with us and said there may even be some savings that they could pass along on performing the roof replacement if we allow the solar to be placed on it.
That's great. So are we going to pursue more information on that?
Correct. So we're putting out for capital pricing is the full amount. Obviously, when we go out to bonding, we only take what we need at that point. So if we are able to get some money back from the solar company, it would reduce the amount of bonding we need.
Thank you. Mrs. Grober?
Yeah, so with Osborne Hill, you know, it says partial roof replacement. What percentage?
I don't have the exact percentage. It is a very large percentage, the majority of the roof. We're not doing the gym roof, because it's a newer roof.
Right.
We're not doing the annex, so that's why we call it partial, but other than those two.
Other than those two, it's pretty much?
Yes, it's the east and west hallway completely.
Okay, all right, great. That was my question, because I just, you know, you're always worried that you're going to then have to play catch-up with the other parts, but if it is just the gym, which is just a couple of years old, and the annex, which is about 10 years, I guess, right? Okay, and then for both this and Walter Fitzgerald, these are both going to be going to the SBSBC?
No, we're going to speak with Ms. Kupchak and see if we can get the Walter Fitzgerald done as a separate standing, a separate building committee.
Okay, because in the materials, it says, it says the SBSBC for Walter Fitzgerald. I think on page eight, it will be assigned to the town's special standing building committee?
No, that, unfortunately, these, the town's building committee has a $3 million cap, so we're going to have to.
Okay, right, so I guess I would just change that then?
Yeah, we'll change the wording.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Very quickly, first of all, as a follow-up to Mr. Asa's question, Mr. Cummings or Mr. Andrews, I thought there was one other classroom that did have AC in it, the mindfulness room, the, I don't, can't remember what it's called, but beyond the main office, there was more AC in that building.
I'm going, Papa George answered that question, and I might own had, I think it's not only perhaps that one, I think there's a conference room across the hall from the principal's office that might have one as well. I think there might be a couple of units there.
I think he was talking about window.
The window units or the split units? I know the Zen room.
I just know they had cold air.
There is the Zen room that did have two air conditioner units in it, but we did over the summer replace those with a split unit. There may be an air, window unit I'm missing, so I will look into that.
Yeah, I think there might be a window unit in that conference room across the hall from Ms. Donowitz's office, I think.
Okay, and then my second question to Mr. Cummings, do you see this work at St. Emory's as possibly finally, well, two questions about this. One, making it more marketable for something that we had agonized over and, you know, wordsmithed to death, the whole notion of bringing other districts and turn, not that, I mean, we're doing it to serve our students, our students are the priority, but do you see that this could factor into that? In which case, would there be any interest with that building committee of, you know, getting, or before we get actual ed specs or anything like that, of getting input from likely other districts of, I do not know how this would be done, of what would you be looking for that would make this a desirable option for your district to, you know, outplace your students to, or however you phrase that? Is that any part of this conversation?
I think it is. I will tell you, Mr. McCusie had to go home to take care of something, but I, he and I have talked about this, Ms. Donowitz and I have talked about this. We know of at least two cases where students from outside the district came, parent, with their parents, to look at the facility, to look at the school, and the, it was a, one person never went through the front door, looking at the facility. I think the other person did and was not happy with what they were seeing. So I think that that absolutely will play a part in this effort to possibly expand the program's footprint literally across the region and bring in some dollars.
And then also to that point, as we bring this to, you know, as other town bodies take a look at this project, there is a decent amount of space in this, and if we're to own it, do you, what do you see as being other uses for the building?
We've had some preliminary conversations around this. I think it has, beyond even the school year, I think it has potential for a summer placement, place. What that might look like, I am not sure, but if it was to run summer alternative programs for students, and by that, I'm not necessarily thinking just confining ourselves to the high school. During the school year, there are some districts that have explored bringing alternative programs even into middle school level. I don't see right now that we'd have a population that would justify that, but that might be something, again, as we look out both internally and externally for need, how might we support that? But certainly, the, a better utilization of the space, as well as the existing space, and then the capturing of additional spaces within the, within the, within the building, offer a lot, I think, a number of possibilities for essentially a full-year building.
Mr. Asa?
Just one last question. So based on the fact that we don't know what the purchase price would be, and negotiations would not be something we discuss here, let's say hypothetically we did have some room in this budget, what would, what do you estimate would be the cost for the engineering work to determine a quote for HVAC?
We're probably looking at somewhere between 10 and high-side $20,000 for them to come out and do a full engineering evaluation of the electrical, the structure, and the building, to see what the best options would be to run ductwork, exterior, interior, unit size, all that.
So that being said, 10 to 20 grand in a $5 million pool, I want to try and see if there's a way we can incorporate this in here. And I think it's very important, because I was going to bring up what Mrs. Maxon Canelli said, we can do all this stuff, but we're not attracting anybody, and we're not doing our students any favors by putting $5 million into a building and having still no mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning. I think if there's a way that we can get all that preliminary work done in this package, so that we are prepared and can go and add that next project sooner than later. And I think the return on the investment could potentially come, not only for a cleaner, more healthier environment for our existing students and future students, but we could also potentially recoup some of that through out-of-district placements. Now, we've talked about that before, but we know why that hasn't happened. But now, we have a potential situation where we can actually make good on all of that work that previous board has put in.
Yep. We do, we are carrying a contingency with this project, because ripping the roof off, we don't know structurally what we're going to find. If at the end of the day, we do have that money, I would definitely move forwards with putting that project in place.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the same statement. I think it would be helpful as part of this Phase One project, at least, and at a minimum, to try and see if we can get that work done. It also will inform Phase Two. If we can't get it all done in Phase One, give us a better outlook in the future of what we're looking at for that as well. So I think for that price tag, if at all possible, that we can incorporate that into this at this time, it would be important for us to do that for a number of reasons. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Sorry, pressing the wrong part. To Mr. Asa's point, are you, the way I heard what you said is you're talking about, take the number that is in there and add whatever number you recommend, 10,000, 23,000, just add it. So it's 5 million plus, and let's be official about it upfront. Let's not hope that there's some, you know, contingency money left over. Let's be very direct about it upfront and just add it. That was how I heard, Mr. Asa, which is what I completely agree with.
I'm not sure procedurally how that would work.
We're not voting on anything tonight. But some of the process that you explained, wouldn't a, wouldn't that be done anyway as part of the renovation, in terms of assessing the electrical needs of the building?
Yes, some of it would be. We actually have some of the electrical assessment done, because we did upgrade some of the electrical to handle the new air conditioning for the Zen room. We would just have to take that further into the study that we've already started.
Can you give a little more just detail into the contingency, what you're factoring into that?
The contingency was really because not being a building that we've maintained or have control over, again, ripping off the roof, we could run into structural issues which could turn into millions of dollars overnight. So that was the big contingency carrier right there. The additional is because of the unknown hazardous materials. The window pricing we received does encounter, does include PCBs for windows. We asked them to price it out as if it was all PCB contaminated. We don't know, we don't have an investigation on that, but we did ask that to be priced out as if it was. The flooring, the VCT tiles on the floor, we priced out as asbestos, so that we included the engineering company to do the onsite monitoring, to do an abatement, rather than just saying, let's rip it out and hope for the best. So that's why you see a contingency in there for structural and for hazardous materials that are unknown.
And was it based on numbers for past abatements or testing, in terms of how you got that figure?
As far as for the figures for?
Like what the number is?
The contingency number?
Yes.
The contingency number, we actually backed into, from the board's recommendation way back when we had put the 1.5 million in for the purchase price. They had, you guys had asked us to increase it to 5 million, you put that number out there and said, use that number and get the projects that need to be done as well. So we, working with our contractors, were able to come up with that number. The million-dollar contingency was something that every one of our contractors recommended.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, one last question. As part of the purchase process, we will of course receive any environmental disclosures as part of that process?
Correct.
So that should be helpful, at least for what can be seen. And inspection on the property, which I would assume, do you include usually a structural engineer inspection or some sort of structural engineer process as part of that? Just because that kind of scared me a little, so I just wanted to back that up. I mean, we haven't purchased this yet, so there are many things to come as part of this.
There are many things to come. We did not include an engineer inspection of the building, only because the arch diocese is pretty much sold as, they're selling it as is. So we're either getting it or not getting it. So we did have an appraisal done of the building. It's not a structural engineer, but it is an appraisal that was done by a commercial appraisal company. They also had an appraisal done, that's how we came up with the purchase price. We split between our two appraisals, and we also worked with our John, what's his, Angel, I'm sorry, John Angel, who's been our realtor for the maintenance building and some other projects that we've done, to come up with what we should, what we feel would be a comfortable number to offer them. We've looked at it our own selves with the engineers and with our own staff to see if there's anything appeal, anything that would stand out at anyone as a structural issue. Again, until we rip the roof off, even if we had a structural engineer come in and do an investigation before we purchased the building, they're not opening up walls, they're not ripping off roofs, they're doing a visual inspection.
Ms. Asa?
Based on what you just said, what would be, because we could, we could make it as part of our offer contingent upon a structural engineer inspection, and that could include opening up walls and doing some more investigative research. What in general is the ballpark for that type of inspection on a commercial property of this size?
I would actually have to look into that, because I've, even in my own personal buying commercial buildings, I've never actually had an engineer opening up walls and looking, usually they come in and do with a visual inspection.
Yeah, I understand that that is generally the course.
Yeah.
But we're talking about taking on a building for the next 50-plus years.
Correct.
So if you could, if you don't mind, if you could get the board that ballpark estimate for a number of the actual engineer and what he or she would expect the additional costs of opening walls and whatnot, because I can't imagine the diocese would be opposed to that, because if we passed on this, another buyer would be interested in the same things, unless they were tearing the building down, which it doesn't appear to be what our choice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So do you want to move on to the ed specs you have before you?
Yep, just moving on, first reading of Osborne Hill education specifications?
So you, what you have is the basic boilerplate roof replacement ed specs that we use. We've made the changes as necessary, and they will be, like we said, assigned, hopefully assigned to the standing building committee.
Any questions on the Osborne Hill ed specs? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the ed specs for Walter Fitzgerald.
So what you see before you is actually the same. It's the boilerplate roof inspection ed specs. You don't see the other projects listed in these ed specs that will be forthcoming after a meeting with the state. The state considers a roof a pretty standard, move forwards. The other projects are considered priority, so we need to meet with the state to see what type of ed specifications they're looking for, what they want specified in them, so that we would be able to write them to their specs for the possible reimbursement.
And when would you foresee that meeting happening?
The meeting was scheduled for December 17th.
Thank you. Any questions on Walter Fitzgerald? Ms. Asa?
And just to confirm on what the previous first read coupled with this, is everything, you anticipate everything in there minus the purchase price as being potentially reimbursable? Or not painting and stuff?
I can't say what the state is going to consider reimbursable and not reimbursable. It will be at their discretion, obviously.
Based on general, our last few- Based on general, our last few projects and some of these would -- in the blast, are some of those items, have they been reimbursable?
Yes. The -- so yes, the answer to the question is yes. We would expect some of them to be reimbursable. However, I can't speak for what the state's mindset is. I do know there's been some talk about, I don't want to say negative, look at this building, but in reality, yes, it's been negative. They, you know, when we approached them about the actual purchase of the building, because that is a reimbursable price, that's a reimbursable project is to purchase the building. We basically got a verbal, "We're not bailing out any church groups, so don't even think about it." So we have not have positive feedback about this project with the state. However, that's been, like I said, verbal. We haven't actually sat down, met with them, and explained what our intentions are, what we want to do with the building, with the purchase and everything. So that's hopeful that we will not get that kind of feedback when we actually sit down. Otherwise, we'll be reaching out to you guys again for your assistance on the state level.
And what do we anticipate the timeframe of coming to an agreement?
As far as...
Purchasing or not purchasing the building?
We're hoping, as long as this moves through the town bodies, we will put the proposal out there to purchase the building. It obviously has to go before all the other town bodies for approval. We're hoping to move forwards before the end of the fiscal year with it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
So to clarify, these ed specs for the Walter Fitzgerald campus, this, in fact, is only a partial first read. We're going to get something significantly different?
You will get something significantly different to include all the projects that you have listed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Just bringing up the timing. So for both of these, so assuming that the plan is to have the board, this board approve them at our next meeting, which is January 7th.
Correct.
And then it would go to the Board of Selectmen and then the Board of Finance, who wouldn't be able to see it, assuming it went through the Board of Selectmen and was approved, it would then go to the Board of Finance for their February meeting, which is at the beginning of the month. So technically, they could go to the RTM in February and then be able to move on. So does that timeline work?
It does. That's actually the timeline we looked at and we're hoping to move forwards with because getting bids out for roofing contractors, February, March, it's not high in their summer, so...
Right. No, I know that that's tricky. Right. So we wouldn't want to go any later than February, so hopefully there won't be any delays with any of the other town bodies in terms of their approval.
And I know in the past, from what I understand in past practice, the funding has been moved forwards without the ed specs. We're trying something new and coupling them and trying to move them all through at the same time, so that...
You want, the more information, the better.
Yeah.
Which is great. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Of course, if anybody has any questions after the meeting, please forward them to the superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Pepper George. Approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved the November 19th, 2019 special meeting minutes, and the November 21st, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Peterson, all opposed. Abstentions? Ms. Vitale and Ms. Pico, motion passes. Six oh two. Superintendent's report. Mr. Cummings, all of you.
Okay. I have a number of things to talk about tonight. So I guess the first thing is on the agenda is the district improvement plan. I provided the board with a overview memo of a proposal, essentially a timeline laying out the second half of the year and how we would begin to approach this. I want to be clear in this that now that the board has approved the use of January 14th, and I just know that as soon as we approve this, it's probably going to snow that day anyway, but you mark my words. This essentially lays out an understanding of what we'd be doing. I'd be looking to begin to communicate this understanding to the administrators and to the community as quickly as possible, and then using that date with the schools, engaging the administrators in January around how this would work. We have a district leadership meeting on January 9th, and then having them exercise the protocol at their schools, and then also beginning to work with other stakeholder groups that we can begin to work with, invited parents, high school students to get their input. The protocol essentially sets up and allows for this use at different, through different conversations and different groups. So at Board of Leadership this past week, I had a conversation just to how might we want to structure this with other town elected officials? How might the board want to engage in this protocol themselves, and how do we find time to do that? And collect all the information through a similar format so that it can be, serve as a database for information and direction going forward. Once we identify kind of the trends and the big picture ideas and the big issues and prioritize those as part of that identification process, then how do we begin to go forward with the community to think about what this begins to look like over the course of, what are the major initiatives of the next district improvement plan? What are the big trends and themes of that? And then how does it begin to play out over the course of the five years in terms of individual actions? How do those actions build upon each other? I want to be clear that what I like about the SWAT process is, you know, and if you're familiar with this, the strengths and weaknesses are the internal issues. The opportunities and threats are external. So when we think about opportunities, just the conversation at the PTA council meeting last evening around the Fairfield Ward students from the Voices of Equity presented on their work, well, how might that present as an opportunity in the district? How might the -- Mrs. Hoag talked about the Greenleaf Schools and how our schools can become more environmentally conscious. How might that present as opportunities? So while much of the district improvement plan clearly has to focus on the growth of student achievement, the professional development of staff, and be much about that, there are other opportunities within an improvement plan to engage other stakeholders in meaningful work. The social-emotional learning aspect of our work, the administrators today had a three-hour workshop on restorative practices and what opportunity that might offer. There was great interest among the administrators after hearing about that today and what that might look like for our students. So there's a lot of ideas on the table. Our task is going to be to make sense of those ideas, prioritize those ideas, and then build a focus so that we don't take on too much, but we take on the things that we know we can accomplish and do over the course of the five years and prioritize those things. So that's the overview of what we want to do in the spring, and if there's questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Only to the degree that you want, I mean, obviously, you want the board engaged in this whole process, but I don't know if you'd be able to work with board leadership on an agenda item for January 7th of, you know, I don't know, getting us something. Can you please think about these topics ahead of time and let's have, you know, a focused, productive discussion about where you want our involvement, what we're looking for, or anything like that? Or are you just throwing the door open and you just want people to email you ideas? I mean, I think a more focused discussion January 7th would make more sense, but when you talk about reaching out for stakeholder input, at what point are you then first reaching out to us? I guess I should start with that because obviously, the only thing on here, I'll just back, I'm unclear on what our role is going to be. That, I'll leave it at that. Maybe you could define that better.
Yeah. And this is a conversation, so it's not like, I think that we have to delve further into this, but this is what I would see, one possibility what I would see, is if, on the January 14th date, we'll get an initial set of a lot of information. What I foresee the role being is helping to begin to sort that information and provide your prioritization to that as well. So essentially, what we're gathering for the board determination of what the district improvement plan is, is data, insight from the stakeholders throughout the community that would inform ultimately the decisions that you're going to make in the district improvement plan. Because I do believe it's the board's decision around what ultimately winds up in that plan and how that plan takes shape. And part of that work is going to be in, while we're going to gather input from the stakeholders around their prioritization, it really is the board's determination of what those, ultimately, those priorities are going to be. So my sense of how this works is the board would almost act as the oversight committee to that work. I do see a need for a steering committee of educational professionals in the district that the board would provide direction to through me. So the steering committee would be people who, from across the district, they'd be representative of our teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals. And I think what their task would be to say, based on what the board's decisions are around priorities, how does this begin to extend into action plans? What might be the data sources we identify to measure growth towards those outcomes? And it would also be the steering committee that would begin to develop the five-year budgeting figures that we need to move forward. So I think it's the board is working, as I see this, the board would be taking the information, essentially combing through it to make some decisions, and then providing direction back to the steering committee on what to do with that information and how to move forward, with some expectations of how the steering committee would then come back to the board and present where they're going, and then again, through feedback, the board would help guide their works and ultimately the creation of that document. Does that sound good?
Sure. Any other questions? District Improvement Plan was in this side of the room. Okay. Moving on.
Task two, I don't have a memo in this, but I did send the board the letter, so in advance of tonight's meeting. So the, in consultation with the middle school administrators and the program directors, we have made a decision that, as I tried to state as clearly as possible in the letter tonight to the board, to our staff, and to the community as a whole. Based on the concerns and questions about the timing of the scheduled implementation, we've putting it off one year. This does allow the opportunity, this does create an opportunity for, one, a better definition of the questions, and, two, a greater involvement of our staff to begin working with our administrators, or teachers to begin working with our administrators on problem-solving, some of this work. Our hope would be, our intention would be, that the questions that are remaining would be largely resolved by the end of this school year. We want to be able to go into next year with the information that people have, the ideas we've had, and begin to test them. Having said that, as I made clear, I believe, in the letter, we are going to go forward in the budget. We can't identify in good conscience that we have concerns about interventions and student achievement and not attempt to do something about that already. So next year, we are putting in the budget proposal, and you'll see more of this in January, but the idea of a SRBI interventionist coordinator essentially at each of the middle schools, as well as we are going to be moving forward on moving from essentially what is now a one-program idea to address reading, for example, at the middle schools, to opening up alternative reading programs, both of varying lengths, to address different reading levels, issues that we have of middle school students. So the idea being that things that we're learning next year would also then ultimately be put into place in the 21, 22 school year. So it provides a longer time to address those enrichment and intervention concerns. It provides a longer time to address the instructional concerns about teaching in the block, and it provides an opportunity to work in partnership with all of our staff around that. So that's essentially why we've made this decision to move forward, because we understand that people rightfully have concerns with the timing, and we want to be mindful of that and work with the community, our staff around that.
Any questions about the middle school schedule? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
I'll just leave it at as a profound thank you for the decision.
You're welcome. Okay. My last memo, but not my last item. The, I have had a conversation, individual conversation with number you, but I just wanted to follow up on this topic. As part of the grade point average discussion last year, the board looked at revising the grade point average scale at our high schools. And one of the things that was not determined at that time was the elective course issue. And that currently is addressed through the zero scale at our high schools. The board gave direction to the administration to, and our request was to work on that this year and come back with a proposal this year. I will say that we did meet, we met last year with our curriculum liaisons, just for point of information. A lot of our elective areas that are directly impacted by this are led by teacher leaders in the district. They are not program directors, who are administrators. So we met with them, I believe, once, if not twice, before the end of the school year, I apologize, and then twice this school year around addressing this issue. And we really made a lot of movement. They are a terrific group of educators, and as a group, they really worked through this process. One of the most profound things that came out of this is we started to talk about, well, what might be the difference, say, and this is what we were essentially wrestling with, what's the difference between an art class that would be at the honors level, not separating out AP art here, but what would be an art class that would be at the honors level and what would be an art class that would be at the college level for GPA? And we had a conversation, this goes back to last spring, where one of the curriculum liaisons had this moment of clarity and said, as we started to talk about the things that kids would be required to do. And she said to the room, and the room fell silent, "Well, what we're talking about, what do we want all kids to have those experiences?" And that was a shift in the room. I would say as a group, there was general consensus that, yeah, we would want all kids to have those experiences. That really isn't how we should define an AP class or a college, or, excuse me, an honors class or a college class. So we needed something else if we were going to continue to pursue this. This year, with Ms. Goddison joining us, and I would say also Ms. LaSalle, who's now our science coordinator and has some experience from her prior district in, as the director of, in her prior role, not only did she lead the science department, but she led the Perkins Department's tech ed, family consumer science, and business. We have an opportunity, newly identified opportunity, to work with our community colleges to identify courses that we offer that would correspond to community college course offerings. And in that process, we could mirror some of the work that is currently being done in the core classes that mirror UConn courses, the ECE courses. And under our current system, those courses would earn AP credit. If an English class qualifies for ECE credit from UConn, it gets an AP credit. Well, in our exploration, a higher-level family and consumer science culinary class or a child development class or a CAD class in tech ed, if that's earning college credit at Norwalk or Husaton or Gateway, do we have a similar responsibility to look at those courses and say, "How might they align to potential college credit? And can we get kids college credit at the community colleges, which transfer to UConn credit if a student moves, goes to Husaton and eventually transfers to one of the UConn courses?" So this kind of reframed the conversation for everyone in the room, and it drew a lot of high interest, and we want, we're asking for more time, essentially, I apologize to Mr. Peterson's point, I'm burying the lead. We're asking for more time in exploring this because we want to be able to work with our community college system to better identify these courses and move forward for a decision in the 21, 22 school year, leave things as they are for right now. But I think that this would also tie into work we want to do in the district about building career and college pathways and really opening up some opportunities for our students with college providers. So I'm asking for the board's okay and holding off on that decision for one more year.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns or okays? Ms. Jacobson?
No, I just wanted to clarify for families who may be watching at home that in case they didn't remember, that next year was supposed to be the first they didn't remember, that next year was supposed to be the first year where electives were going to be changing GPA. So this year, there was, everything was kind of held harmless, they stayed as they were. So just for anyone who's watching, next year, when you're elect, take your electives, it'll be the same as it is this year, as it was last year. So that change won't be taking place, correct? Is that accurate?
That is correct, thank you.
Just thank you for the thoughtful approach, and I'm excited to hear more about it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, just a few more items, and then it's quicker. So one is, there's been a couple emails in the past day around the middle school proposed schedule, and while even we're putting that off a year, I just want to clarify, in the initial proposal, there was a reduction of about four hours of instructional minutes in music at the middle school. I spoke with Mr. Buno today, Mr. Buno today, who's our music curriculum liaison. He's aware that, and his staff is aware, that that change was erased with the music teachers came forward to us and offered a new schedule proposal. We've adopted that, but I think that there's still some information to the original proposal that's out there in the community. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the schedule change that we adopted based on the music teachers' recommendation largely eliminated, didn't totally eliminate four hours of instructional time, I think it came down to about a hour of minutes, but it's very much, the music teachers are very much more comfortable with what we're talking about. So that really is not an issue if parents are concerned about it. Anybody can always email me or call, but I think we've addressed that issue with the music teachers. Second, I want to quickly read to you a letter we got from Alan Bernstein. Alan is the senior director, State and District Partnerships for the College Board. And so we just got this email on Thursday. So it says, Dear Fairfield colleagues, congratulations on being included in the College Board's 10th Annual AP District Honor Roll. This year's honor roll consists of 250 school districts in the U.S. and Canada that simultaneously achieved increases in access to advanced placement courses for a broader number of students while also maintaining or improving the rate at which AP students earned a score of three or higher on the AP exams. Attached is the complete list of the 250 school district winners sorted by state. I will get this information to the board, I'll give you the list of schools, but if you were to look at the Connecticut, so let's reiterate that for a second. You not only are increasing participation, you're increasing the number of students who earn a three or higher. Those two things don't often happen together. There's often a lag time, you increase the participation, and then the scores will usually follow. I think particularly profound about this was when you look at the other districts in the state that are doing this good work, there are districts that, I want to say this very carefully, but have not had previous high rates of AP success. There are districts that have a lot of achievement gap issues, there are districts that I've been working for a long time to raise socioeconomic issues and student achievement. What Fairfield stood apart from in this was as a Fairfield County District, we were the only one. So there is really good work happening here, it's nowhere near complete, but about addressing these achievement gap issues. And I think it's something that the district, our staff, our administration at the high school, but also the middle school, have to take a lot of pride in, because it really reflects a belief in kids and what kids are capable of doing if given the appropriate opportunity. So I'll follow up with the board and give you the full list of this. I'm getting, not as many as I did last week, but this phone has not stopped buzzing tonight with followers on Twitter. I don't know anything. Mr. Poppa George and I spoke before the meeting, and it looks light, light. The timing is everything. I'm telling everybody to wake up assuming you're going to school on time. We'll see, but we will be mindful of the timing of this, and just, it may not be a lot, but the timing may be just perfect, maybe you'll get an extra hour or two. And the last thing is, just on behalf of the Fairfield Public Schools, I just want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday and a restful, happy break.
Thank you for that report, and congratulations to you and to the staff for the report on the AP scores. That's kudos, we appreciate the work that you do, and it's great to be recognized on a national level. Community liaison reports. Ms. Picko?
Wednesday is Septa Cookie Walk here at the Board of Ed in the main lobby, starting at 9:00 a.m. If you want to come and get some homemade cookies, you can get a box of them, I believe, up until noon or 1:00. They're also hosting an AR workshop on Monday, the 16th, if you want to attend and sign up. And if you become a member, you can join their holiday celebration at Local on Wednesday, the 18th.
One second, before Mrs. Gerber, before I let you give your report, just for the cookie walk, I will say, do not wait until noon or 1:00. The cookies go early, so anyone who's here, go down early for the best election. Sorry, Mrs. Gerber, on to your report.
You probably should have waited on the cookie stuff until after my report, kind of raised the mood a little. Mill Hill Building Committee update, I just want to share with the board that the committee has a firmer set of numbers, and unfortunately, those numbers are larger than the numbers they previously had. So right now, we're looking at probably about $1.6, $1.7 million more than what was originally funded, which, just as a reminder, was slightly over $22 million. It was like $22,600 or something like that. So now we're looking at 23.7 or thereabouts. And we did go through at the meeting, so I jotted down all of the changes. It's not one big thing, well, other than the air conditioning increase in the price, which is $500,000, but after what happened at Sherman, that's not a huge surprise. Everything else is relative to the size of the project, fairly small, just, you know, millwork and flooring, $200,000, electrical infrastructure upgrades that were not anticipated or cost more, those are $100,000. The Conservation Department has stipulated a more detailed and deeper water retention system, that's another $200,000. One of the areas where one of the additions is going to be put, they did soil borings, and some of the soil there really wouldn't work for building the addition on it, so they're going to have to do some remediation and improvement of that soil, that's $260,000. We should be getting a delineation of all these things, perhaps with some more detail, so as soon as I have that, I'll be happy to share that with the board. And so right now, the thought, the Building Committee, Mr. Quinn is planning on discussing this with the first select woman, if he hasn't already, this was a week ago that we had this meeting, so I believe he was planning on reaching out to her not long after the meeting. And then the thought is to go back to the other town bodies for this additional funding, because really, all of these things are really important to the overall project. So the Building Committee's feeling is that, well, no one's going to be happy about these additional costs, they are all essential to the project that was approved by us and by the other town bodies. So theoretically, this may not be coming back to us, because there's really nothing in terms of changing the ad specs, so, but obviously, I'll keep everyone apprised if and when it goes to the other town bodies, you know, obviously, we'd want to show our support to make sure that this project stays on track. They still are planning on keeping the schedule, so they'd be starting construction, you know, at the end of the school year, going through the summer, all next year, and then the following summer, and then they would be completely finished the year after that, you know, probably around December of 2022. But, and obviously, if anything changes on that, I'll certainly let you know. So that's, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions from Mrs. Gerber? Okay, seeing none. PT Council met last night, they had a great meeting, a lot of presentations, we had a presentation from Fairfield Cares. Mrs. Hoag spoke about the Greenleaf School, Sherman is moving forward as a Greenleaf School, sort of piloting some of the initiatives there to see if we can bring them district-wide. The Ward's Voices of Equity also spoke, they're very inspiring, debating if we had some time at a board meeting, I would actually like them to maybe come and just share some of the work that they're doing. They're having a workshop on the 20th, they're going to be at Fairfield University, they're really just doing a lot of great work. So as always, PTA Council has money, so if any schools are watching, any PTAs, please, if you have any projects that you need funding for, please reach out to PTA Council, that there's money available. What else? Fay had their first performance at Sherman, it was well-received. I attended the morning performance, and there was a Baroque cellist, there was the conductor dressed up as Vivaldi, Horatio did indeed play a large recorder and a small recorder at the same time. And with that, I know you all have your curiosity beat, and he will be back with Vivaldi and Vivaldi's student in February, so stay tuned. You know what? I'm going to send you all the video, and you are going to be amazed. Anyone who loves playing the recorder, I'm telling you right now, it is amazing. Jim Mascanelli, I'm sending you the video as I walk out the door. Any other committee reports? Mr. Peterson?
Just briefly, on the last Board of Finance meeting, they elected new officers. Jim Brown is now the Chair of the Board of Finance, Krista Witt as Vice Chair, Mary Leclair is returning as Secretary. The meeting was largely devoted to the increasing estimates of cost for remediation for projects around the town. So there was a mention of 1.8 earlier in this meeting, and it's likely to be higher than that, so that's really not much of a surprise.
Open board comment? Ms. Picko?
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays. I'm not going to be here on Wednesday, most likely, Thursday, for the Board of Ed Town Hall. My daughter and I are going to be in a special performance of The Nutcracker on Friday, and we have our rehearsal on Thursday. And yes, I am getting in a tutu, in a leotard, dancing up on stage. So since I probably will not see you, happy holidays, happy new year, can't wait to start a new year with you guys. The second thing is, I am in charge of Diversity Week at Burr, and I completely revamped it, and I can't wait to share it with the other schools. Made it more about every single grade incorporating diversity into their classrooms, and they have a book every day, this week in every grade, and then do an interactive assembly. And finally, I have a brand-new appreciation for elementary school teachers as I coach Odyssey of the Mind, six six-year-olds. I'll just leave it at that.
Anybody else? Mr. Asa?
Just a quick follow-up on our calendar discussion. Mr. Cummings, if it's okay and you don't mind, I think an infinite campus blast to the entire district would be wise. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we are all back here on Thursday at 7:30 for a town hall, and if anybody is watching, PTA presidents, please share this with your community. Thank you. Public comment? If any members of the public would like to give comment, I invite you to step forward now. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jill Vergara, 271 Old Post Road. I came to share my experience at the Math Academy, my son's experience. I know you've gotten a lot of positive feedback for the program, and a lot of people are really happy, we're definitely happy there. But I wanted to make sure that you understood that this isn't really, like, icing on the cake for a lot of us, especially for my son. It's not a supplemental for us, it was essential for his academic performance to experience something like this. We saw him going down a spiral where he was disassociating with school, he totally disengaged, he wouldn't do his homework, he was unhappy, and this has been completely transformative for him. It's amazing. He comes back excited from school, he tells us about the things that he's doing all the time, he talks about his classmates, all of the ways that they share things with each other, their interests, and it's just a completely different thing than what he's, how he's experienced school before, and it's unlocked something in him. And I'm so grateful that you have promoted this program, and it really has changed my son's life, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Seeing none. Motion to return, Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor. It's unanimous, we are returned.